Councilor Dougler.
Here.
Hartmeyer-Brigg.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Kimmy.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Tibnon.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here. Thank you for that. So just a little bit of how we're going to operate tonight, we're going to start with visitor comment that is not related to the public hearing that we're having later. So if you're here to talk on the public camping ordinance, that will be during the public hearing later on the agenda. We'll have council items, staff items, we'll have consent items which are routine actions of the city that have often come to city council before they're on here because they're routine and how we vote for them. We have two proclamations tonight, one for Jewish American History Month, one for Memorial Day. We have a presentation from the Family Justice Center. We have a public hearing on Beaverton's proposed camping ordinance. We have an action item around adopting a resolution for our complete streets. And we have a work session tonight on park and open framework. As a reminder to the public, I am still on maternity leave, so I'm going to facilitate this meeting to the best of my capacity, but I'm still feeding my daughter. So the council president and I might do a little bit of tag teaming in tonight's agenda on facilitation. So for the council, nothing shall change. We'll still use the chat for order of speaking, but who's facilitating might go back and forth, although I fed her. I'm hoping she will comply for the rest of the meeting, but we shall see. With that, is there any council items?
Sorry, I have a council item, but do you want to do visitor comment or you want to jump?
I'm gonna run through these first and then jump into it.
Okay, um, so yes, I have two comments. One, this is more for folks listening. We've been getting some emails from folks that have tried contacting us or have said that they've tried contacting us. I just want to offer some clarification. If you email the mayor mailbox, that goes to mayor and mayor staff. If you email the city mail mailbox, there is someone on staff that helps organize and coordinate those emails and that communication. And then we as counselors get it in a more comprehensive report. If you want to contact any one of us directly, the best way to do that is to email us at our individual emails. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on record. I've heard from a lot of folks who've said that they've reached out multiple times. If you've reached out multiple times, I haven't known that. So just if you're trying to reach any individual counselor specifically, it is helpful if you reach out to us individually because that is the best way for us to know that you reached out. Part one. Part two, I wanted to clarify some comments that I had made about the fiscal sustainability subcommittee work that we had done. We looked at big picture items like increasing property tax, considering business tax. This is for the council, by the way, so this is for my counselors. And we looked at reducing expenses in bigger and impactful ways. Three weeks ago in a meeting with our consultants, I went to support the probably the need for increasing the property tax with great caution and hesitation because everything we were seeing in front of us said that this is what we need to do. And I did that under the impression that each of us would look at the budget deeply and review the budget binder as closely and as deeply as possible. I'm concerned about a lot of the items. I'm going to reserve those comments for when we're in budget, but I encourage you to read that budget binder with a fine tooth comb because a lot of the stuff that that I recommended in the past was based on the information I was given at the time. And I'm really starting to think about whether we have all the information and look forward to continuing that discussion. That's it.
Counselor Tibnon.
Yeah, I just this is not a topic we're going to be talking about tonight, but it's related to one. And we have a lot of folks that have joined on, so I figure it was worth sharing this because there's there's a a lot of discussion happening around the shelter, what it will and won't be. And somehow it's worked its way into the public conversation that this is going to be a no barrier shelter. And that has not come up in any of our conversations. We have discussed options, but a no barrier shelter has not been on the list. Low barrier, which is a defined thing. But for those that are really concerned about that, I figured it was worth mentioning here since we'll be talking about the topic of homelessness later on.
Great. Any other council items? Dan, any staff items this evening?
Yeah, I hate to belabor it, but I have a couple. I know we've got a busy agenda, so I'll be brief. One item, the Budget Committee. We have, I just want to remind the public and Budget Committee, we've got our second meeting on the 23rd at 6:00 PM. It'll be online Zoom platform. We also were able to post some of the responses to the initial round of questions that we received from the Budget Committee this afternoon. So those are on our website, beavertonoregon.gov. I believe there's a spotlight for the Budget Committee information that'll take you right to that page. So I want to ensure that folks have time to review those and ask more questions if they have them. The other item, I just want to recognize that tonight is actually Glenn Ferman's last city council meeting. Our library director is moving on, going to take a sabbatical. And I just wanted to recognize and appreciate that this is his last council meeting and our last opportunity for phasing or whatever other love that we want to provide to Glenn. And want to just appreciate the years of service he gave to the community. His last day with the city is Thursday, the 25th, so we've got a few more days to communicate with him as well. I just want to say thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Glenn, for your time here serving Beaverton. You want to take a couple of minutes or no pressure?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I just very briefly, because I know we have a very full agenda as usual. And thank you, Dan, for that acknowledgement. I just want to state it's been a true honor and privilege to serve as Beaverton's library director. It's a fantastic community and a very diverse community. And one of the region's most diverse cities. And your library, you should know, council and members of the public who are listening, your library continues to work very hard to serve all the needs of the community that we serve in a variety of ways. And to be a safe and welcoming place for all residents of the communities that we serve. And so I just want to thank you for ongoing support. And no, by the way, just a little plug because you know, we love to do these things. Our grant funded bookmobile and thanks to this council for proving the the grant application and the funds has arrived. It's being, it'll shortly be kitted out with all of its furnishings, equipment, shelving and branding. And stay tuned for an announcement on a ribbon cutting. And I know of at least two of you who will be there for that and hope that all of you can attend because that'll be a great addition to the community and to expand our much needed outreach efforts. So thank you all very much.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, we are going to be on to our public comment portion of tonight's agenda item. Given the large number of people that are signed up to testify, we're going to be limiting public comment to two minutes this evening. Public comment is an essential part of local government business. We take input from our community very seriously. However, in order to help us comply with Oregon's open meeting laws, this is a time for us to hear from you. Not a time for dialogue. If follow up is required on issues not in the public hearing portion, if follow up is required from the first part of public hearing, our assistant city manager, Dan, is here with us and will coordinate any follow up that is needed. Tonight, I'm going to give preference to those in the building, so I'll be hearing from those people first. Up on deck first will be Ben Reese, followed by Michael, followed by Ruben, followed by Kathleen, and then by Rachel. So once you're up to the mic, you'll have two minutes to address the council. We'll probably need a little help facilitation on this process.
Mayor, we're getting them queued up and ready to go.
Perfect.
Mayor, so the people that we have in the council chambers will be speaking during the public hearing. So I'll just go with the first person that you listed, Ben.
Just making sure this works.
All right, you're our first tribute in this hybrid position where people are testifying from the council chamber. So thank you, Ben. Go ahead and address the council.
All right. Hello, council. Hello, mayor. My name is Ben Reese, owner of Lionheart Coffee Company here in Beaverton. We actually celebrate eight years serving Beaverton this week. We have a location on Shoals Ferry Road and one on Watson and First and downtown Beaverton. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Beaverton Loop Project. A few years ago, I was invited to join the CAC for the Loop Project as I had heard about it and shared my enthusiasm about what this vision for this project could be. Our Watson location has been operating for about the length of the pandemic on Watson and First. And we have endured just about anything a small business can go through throughout the pandemic. But I will say that the city of Beaverton was the very first form of any relief that we and many others were able to receive during the early days of the pandemic, one of them being the building of the First Street Dining Commons and some rent relief as well. With the Beaverton Loop Project, it really is tackling some of the key bases that I, as a business owner and a resident of Beaverton, want to see. And that is continue growth and momentum with the First Street Dining Commons, celebrating the assets like the library, the market and the reaser, all the businesses and residents in between. The Loop is also designed to tackle things like parking and safety for pedestrians, bicyclists and all the residents within the downtown Beaverton corridor. So I am here to invite and urge city council to adopt the plans of the Beaverton Loop Project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening and congratulations on your eight years here in the city on Thursday.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and counselors. My name is Michael Hoshizume. I'm a lifelong resident of Beaverton, Chair of Beaverton's Bicycle Advisory Committee and member of the Downtown Loop Community Advisory Committee. My wife and I live about a mile from downtown and often walk and bike to the area. Downtown Beaverton has come alive in the last few years, becoming a destination for me to meet up with friends and family, to grab a meal or coffee and generally spend time together. However, pedestrian and cycling access through downtown can be unpleasant or even unsafe. Narrow uneven sidewalks can make walking through downtown awkward. Bike lanes abruptly end and force people into traffic. And crossing the arterial streets that cut through downtown can feel like a journey unto itself. The downtown loop concept goes a long way to alleviate many of these issues and assist an already vibrant downtown to grow and thrive. The changes being proposed tonight will help people navigate safely into and through downtown and make their time there all the more pleasant. I encourage council to adopt the downtown loop complete street concept plan as a strong step forward to build on the successes of downtown Beaverton and continue to invest in the area's future. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Hi, my name is Ruben Halpern. I'm a resident of Beaverton and I work at Providence Health Plan in Beaverton as a medical director. I'm a member of the Downtown Loop Community Advisory Committee, and I also serve on the board of the Beaverton Downtown Association. I strongly support moving forward with the downtown loop proposal. As a physician with a public health background, I'm fully aware that urban design and urban amenities are key components of health. If we want people to walk and bike, then those activities need to be safe and we need to encourage them. If we want people to interact and gather in public to help build community, then we need to design and build for those purposes. How we design our cities tells a lot about our priorities. For generations, getting cars moving quickly between home and work and maybe the shopping mall was the most important value. Road and infrastructure projects, considering how drivers would be affected. Biking and walking were often not considered or were afterthoughts. Making great places was not a top priority, but it should be. The Loop is generational and transformational, and it will create an amazing place that will be one of the crown jewels of the metro area. I fully believe that if we build great places with great walking, biking and congregating infrastructure, people will begin to change how they interact with Beaverton. Rather than speeding through, we'll have people linger, walk around, shop and eat more. Design and development choices were made in the last few decades that pushed us into a car centric lifestyle without appropriate options. We're now seeing the cumulative detrimental effects on our personal health, societal well being and the environment of that development pattern. That doesn't have to be our future. There are these great vibrant spots in town like Restaurant Row and Dining Commons and then the reaser, the round, the food cart. Let's connect them. The Loop is essential. It's an amazing next step to a healthier, more vibrant Beaverton. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Kathleen Perry. I am a 13 year resident of Central Beaverton and a member of the Community Action Committee. I have come to really love this city and am here to ask you to adopt the Beaverton Downtown Loop Complete Street Concept Plan because I am confident that it will help make a more inclusive downtown for our community. This project matters a lot to me as a person who uses a wheelchair to get around. The proposed changes will improve not only sidewalk surfaces, but the team of experts have plans in place to improve traffic flow, which will make me and others with mobility issues feel safer moving around downtown. This plan is a leap forward in making our city more accessible and enjoyable to every member of the community. To quote city manager Jenny Haryama, "We have a bright future thanks to thoughtful planning and significant investment happening today toward our collective community vision." I couldn't have said it better than that, and I am thankful that you're furthering that vision. I appreciate your time and ask that you please adopt the Beaverton Downtown Loop Complete Street Concept Plan.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. This is Rachel Phillip. I am a member of the Loop Community Advisory Committee. I'm also Chair of the Central Beaverton NAC. But I'm here today as a community member. I am here to, as well, to urge you to adopt the Downtown Loop Complete Streets Plan. We've heard some great testimony as to why it's important. So I wanted to share some, some ways it will affect me personally. The Loop will be somewhere my kids can walk and roll safely as they grow up. It'll open up half of downtown to each other. Currently, I live south of Farmington and Farmington is like this big barrier for us that we never cross. So we don't visit the businesses that are north of Farmington. The adopting the Loop Plan will allow people to cross Farmington and Canyon more safely and allow our small businesses to thrive more. It will allow us easier access to the MACs for very similar reasons. Looking towards the future, we want a more, a community to look more like what the Loop proposes if we're going to solve issues like climate and housing and have a place where a community, the place where we live is somewhere where we want to be and not just drive through. So for those reasons, I urge you to adopt the Complete Streets Plan for the Loop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. City Recorder, is that everyone in the building?
Mayor, so the people that are here are going to be making a comment on the House bill.
So making sure that everyone, there was a list here. So I just want to make sure everyone that's there to talk, just an open session has been given the opportunity.
Yes, the rest are virtual.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to our virtual list now. First up is Sahan.
Hi, actually, I'm here for the House Bill as well.
Okay, well, we will be taking that later in the later part of the evening.
Do you have other comments today? Raise my hand again for that to stand the list?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem. Tina Ricks, are you here for a general comment this evening?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I'm waiting for the counter to go. Okay. My name's Tina Ricks. I'm a Beaverton resident and a member of the THPRD Nature and Trails Committee. I frequently both bike and drive into Central Beaverton for shopping and meetings and the farmer's market and other destinations. I'm also a confident adult cyclist and the current bike infrastructure in Central Beaverton is in places terrifying. If it's terrifying for me, it's utterly unusable for less confident cyclists, young adults, disabled people and anyone who isn't willing to take the lane in quotes and ride with the cars. If we build a system that is only barely usable by confident adult cyclists, then that's all we'll ever have using it. Timid adults, families with children, people with disabilities and senior citizens will stay away. My Beaverton neighbors all have bikes. They're in the garages and dusty and behind the lawnmower because it's too scary to ride anywhere near the traffic in Central Beaverton. To enjoy the many attractions of Central Beaverton, they drive because it feels safer. The Beaverton Loop Project will help to remedy this, creating a place where people can walk and ride without being terrified and maybe even feel welcome. I also have a young adult child in my home who is unable to drive because of a minor disability. They are a working, taxpaying citizen who cannot drive. They are planning to move to Central Beaverton soon because it's one of the few places in Washington County where they can live and thrive as a non-driver with access to shopping, high capacity bus lines, housing and MAC stops. The ability to safely ride a bike will make a huge difference to my child and to any other non-driver. Helping Central Beaverton be a, become a more welcoming place to people outside cars benefits all of us. The Beaverton Loop Project will help people like my family member live a complete life without being a driver. Please consider adopting this measure.
Thank you. Next up is Nathan.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, yeah. Cool. Yeah, so my name is Nathan. I'm a downtown Beaverton resident also. Yeah, I might be a bit rambly. So I had like a whole speech prepared about how, you know, like cars are like the real threat. And it was going to be really good, but it was like a three minute speech. And then also something really weird happened to me today that caused me to like reflect on it. So for reference, I'm a downtown Beaverton resident. I have two young children. I have a four year old and a one year old and I take my one year old daughter for a walk almost every day in a stroller. And today we were out for a walk and had a really weird confrontation with a person on that walk. And it was like super uncomfortable. And I felt afraid for, which is not a feeling I usually have in downtown Beaverton. And so I reflected after that, like, you know, what, what should I say? You know, should I still say that the Loop is like the highest priority and that this is a thing that I think the council should prioritize? And after reflecting, I think, you know, absolutely, right? That confrontation was like terrible because they don't like ruin my day. I spilled my coffee. Not a good situation at all. But every day when I walk with my four year old, when he's on his bike and when we come to an intersection with cars that I don't know if they're going to stop. Every day when I'm crossing Lombard with my one year old in her stroller and the visibility on the intersection is so bad that I don't know if the cars can see me, I feel much more uncomfortable. And, you know, even looking at statistics, the number of injuries and number of deaths from cars are much more of a serious problem than anything like the uncomfortable situation I ran into today. So yeah, I strongly support the Loop too. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see. Okay, it appears, I'm sorry, Brett? Okay, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor and City Counselors. I'm Steve Ridgeway, owner of Criterion Travel, and I think that everyone's in agreement that the Loop Project's a great idea. But as I read through the project proposal, it's apparent to me the city staff's taken the council's directive to prioritize pedestrian and bicycle safety to an extreme. It's very much out of balance with the needs and the rights of property owners and business owners and drivers. They're also important members of the community. And bottom line, if I run out of time here, I encourage the council to instruct staff to moderate the plan a bit to better balance the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists with the wishes and the rights of existing property owners, business owners and drivers. I have several examples. Let me, let me cut to just a few that are personal. They have to do with the plan for the east side of Hall between Canyon and Milliken where our company's office is located in a small historic house. The plan involves eliminating one of the three northbound lanes on Hall, which is a great idea. I agree. Because it would make several additional feet of roadway available for other uses. And I pointed out to city staff and I'll point out to you that the the current roadway footprint's about 53 feet wide. And by eliminating the third traffic lane, the city could add a bike lane and double the width of the current sidewalks from six to 12 feet. Do it all within the existing 53 foot roadway footprint. But the concept plan being presented to you this evening calls for a 20 foot wide sidewalk in front of our building where almost no one ever walks. That extra width has to come from somewhere. So I would like to have some assurance that it can be accomplished without an incursion onto our property via right of way dedication. Next, city staff indicated their plan calls for the closure of the main driveway from the parking lot we share with Trek Bicycles on the Hall. The challenge there is, and let me just say that I spoke with Jay Graves, the founder of Bike Gallery, in 17 years. There have been zero accidents involving autos coming in or out of the driveway hitting pedestrians or bicycles. So I'm not sure why the plan calls for closing the driveway. It's not unsafe. Okay, thank you. I again encourage the council to instruct staff to moderate the plan a bit. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here to address the council this evening? Brett, you want to try one more time?
Here, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Okay. I've, I'll make this quick here. I want to say that Canyon, Farmington, Hall Boulevard and Watson are all major thoroughfares that intersect north, south, east and west. I understand the city wants to reduce the amount of automobile traffic in the area, but you cannot control Canyon and Farmington. I also understand that the Milliken Extension and Loop Projects are planning for the future and not the current needs of the newly rezoned RCBC downtown area. Please consider where the traffic will end up going if you congest the major thoroughfares. Our cell phones often direct us through neighborhoods when normal faster routes become congested. I wanted to see for myself the reality of the automobile, bicycle and pedestrian traffic on the corner of Milliken and Hall and Milliken and Watson. Between 12:15 and 1:15 PM in, on an average day in April, there were 599 cars traveling north on Hall through this intersection. About 48 traveling west on Milliken and another 27 heading east on Milliken towards Damaro Ford. I counted five pedestrians and two bicycles going north, south. For east, west, I counted four pedestrians, two of which were Damaro customers, a true commuter and homeless person. There were no bicycles traveling east or west. The lack of pedestrian and bicycle traffic certainly does not justify removing one full lane of Hall Boulevard for a subtle new bike lane. Seems like you are putting the cart before the horse on this one. So what happens when Hall Boulevard goes down to two lanes with, when the car wash backs up one lane of traffic on Hall? Now you are down to one lane on occasion. Will cars stop short and be stuck in the, in the way of those traveling on Canyon? Will new traffic light on Milliken and Hall cause unnecessary stoppage of cars? What about cars backing up further south, sitting and idling in new walkable areas? I just hope that any, has anyone ever I just hope that any, has anyone ever with the city just sat and watched traffic for an hour or two in this area? I'm not gonna have time to finish, but I would like to say that I would hope that the city, people within the city would start playing their own devil's advocate and see the possible downside on what they are wanting to create. It feels like the city wants to do whatever they want to do regardless of the consequences to the landowners, businesses, and those traveling through the area. I had to cut my, my speech short. That's what I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we are on to Consent Agenda, Council President. It looks like we'll still be taking it in two motions this evening. We're almost caught up on minutes.
All right. I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Second.
It's been moved to second in by Counselor Hassan. Any discussion on tonight's motion? See none? Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Abstain.
Hart Myer Prigg. Did she say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Hassan?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Abstain.
Teeter?
Abstain.
Tibnon?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Passes four yeses, three abstain.
Thank you. Council President?
I move that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President, seconded by Counselor Hassan. Any discussion on tonight's motion? Counselor Tibnon, are you raising your hand or just looking at the camera? Sorry.
No.
Okay. See none? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselors Duggar?
Yes.
Hart Myer Prigg?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Teeter?
Yes.
Tibnon?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to our proclamations portion this evening. I do know we have a community member here, Rachel Nelson. If they could be promoted for our Jewish-American proclamation. She with us today?
Mayor, I don't see her on the attendee list.
Okay. I will go ahead and read tonight's proclamation. Whereas ever since sixteen fifty-four, when Jewish immigrants first arrived on the shores of what now is the United States, Jewish people have played a central role in the creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and strength of the United States. And whereas in two thousand and six, President George W. Bush proclaimed May as Jewish-American Heritage Month in the United States. And whereas Jewish-American Heritage Month is a tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who helped form the fabric of American history, culture, and society. Whereas members of the Jewish community have been living in the greater metropolitan area since the eighteen hundreds with a current population of about forty thousand across the Portland metropolitan area, including Beaverton. And whereas Beaverton area elected officials from the Jewish community include United States Senator Ron Wyden, U.S. State Representative Suzanne Bonamici, State Senator Elizabeth Steiner, State Representative Dacia Graber, and School Board Member Susan Greenberg. And whereas the Jewish-American story is an important chapter of the American story that has contributed to the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual advancement of all. And whereas the Jewish community in the United States is a targeted religious minority and continues to be challenged by bigotry, hatred, and discrimination. And whereas the Beaverton City Council joins together with people of all faiths and ethnicities to reject bigotry and hatred, advance equity, compassion, and tolerance, and root out hate wherever it exists. And whereas the Jewish-American Heritage Month is a nationally recognized opportunity to learn about and appreciate Jewish heritage and reflect on the history and experiences of the American Jewish community, serving as an antidote to antisemitism. Now therefore, I, Lacey Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim May twenty-three or May twenty-twenty-three as Jewish-American Heritage Month in the city and urge all residents to celebrate the Jewish community's achievements, raise awareness against bias and hate, and come together to honor the community. Our second proclamation tonight is on Memorial Day. Wherein a joint resolution approved to May eleventh, nineteen fifty, Congress provided that Memorial Day should be set aside as a day of prayer for permanent peace. And whereas this day honors more than one million people in the United States military, including nearly six thousand Oregonians, who gave their lives in service to their country from the Civil War to present. And whereas Memorial Day serves as a solemn reminder of the horrors of war and its bitter aftermath and sorrow. And whereas this day has traditionally been devoted to paying tribute to loved ones who lie in hollow graves throughout the land, having sacrificed their lives, that war might end. And whereas Americans, we enjoy tremendous freedoms and privilege thanks to the selfless service people who gave their lives to protect those freedoms in our nation. And whereas the contributions and sacrifice made by service people, whether on our own soil or abroad, deserve our greatest respect. And whereas some of our service people have left us, their bravery remains, and we proudly pray tribute to their memories on Memorial Day. Now therefore, I, Lacey Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim Monday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three as Memorial Day in the City of Beaverton and ask all residents and, and honor given to, thanks for our military heroes who have given the greatest sacrifice their lives. May each of us always remember the incredible price that is paid to maintain our freedom. Also, as a plug, Beaverton hosts the largest Memorial Day celebration in the state of Oregon, and we will have a Howitzer salute. And we will have an F-15 flyover and a lot of dignitary speakers. It's at our downtown Veteran Park. So I know, check it out. It's one of the best ones. Okay. With that, we are on to our first presentation of the evening, Agenda Bill two-three-one-zero-eight, Family Justice Center twenty-twenty-two Annual Report. If we have Judy Willie and Executive Director Rachel. The floor is yours when you're ready.
Hi, Council. Thank you so much for having me. Judy Willie won't be able to join us today, but I will give our presentation. And I know that you guys need to keep it relatively short, so I will be also relatively brief. Inside of your council packets is the Family Justice Center Annual Report for twenty-twenty-two, and I just wanna highlight some of those items that we shared with you. In twenty-twenty-two, we saw a, a large increase in the number of survivors we served as well as the number of services provided. That was in part because in twenty-twenty-two is when we saw our communities largely begin to open up from the stay-at-home orders of the pandemic where children started going back to school and some workplaces started opening up. And so it was more easily, the community had an easier time accessing services, particularly in person. But then also, unfortunately, the reality is that over the pandemic, we saw rates of violence and abuse increase. And as folks were coming out of the pandemic and isolation was strong, we saw cases that needed higher degrees of attention on several different fronts from our service provider partners. So overall, we saw a dramatic increase, like I said, almost two hundred and forty percent increase in the number of survivors served and just a little over three hundred and twenty percent increase in the number of services provided to survivors in Washington County. The other component is because of the pandemic and knowing how difficult it was for folks to access services during that time, and then also understanding the components of isolation, particularly if you're not living in a safe home, we increased outreach. And we did so strategically to our rural areas of Washington County and also, in particular, our Hispanic and Latino communities. We know during the pandemic that our communities of color were hit harder in many different facets, and it's also our communities of color that are disproportionately impacted by violence or abuse. And so we did significant outreach, particularly for those communities. And we saw an increase in rural clients by twenty-six percent and an increase in Hispanic and Latino clients by sixty-seven percent. So I was pleased to see that. These are always, our reports are always challenging to give because we are not the kind of organization that you want to see numbers going up. But I am happy that we were there to meet the need when it presented itself. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Family Justice Center, we're a collaborative organization. So we house eighteen agencies that provide services for victims and survivors. And in order to make that happen, we work together collaboratively in order to deliver those services. And so when the need in our community arose, I was proud that the organization and all of its partners were there to meet that need. With that dramatic increase, we also saw a dramatic increase in services, which indicates that not only were we able to meet that need, but we met the mission of the Family Justice Center, which was to ensure that there was a single location to get needs met, but also a coordinated and collaborative delivery of those services. So folks were able to access multiple different partners and multiple different services in a single location. Overall, in twenty-twenty-two, we served four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven survivors with eight thousand three hundred and forty-four services. And in Beaverton, we served one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine Beaverton residents and provided them with two thousand three hundred and eighty-three services, which over twenty-twenty-one was a five hundred and thirty-three percent increase in the city. We had a couple highlights that I wanted to share, and I put pictures in your packet. But as we were coming out of, again, the pandemic and as we saw needs arise, we instituted a few different programs to help meet those needs. We were able to, working with our partners at DHS and also Huggies and the PDX Diaper Bank, we were able to distribute over fifty thousand diapers last year, which was an incredible amount of diapers. My staff still tells me I don't know when to say no. But the thing that's quite fantastic about that is all those diapers are gone now. I had no idea, honestly, how big of a need diapers were. I've never had an infant, so that'll be your tell right there. But Washington County is actually a diaper desert, which I did not know about. And for those of you that know, diapers are very expensive. And they do not last long. I see the mayor nodding there. Yes, diapers are very expensive. They're fifty to sixty dollars a box, and those boxes can last about a week. And so distributing fifty thousand diapers was not hard, despite my shock when the first truckload arrived. The other thing that we were able to do was distribute food boxes on Thanksgiving. We got to distribute to two hundred families with our partnership in, with the Oregon Food Bank, and then all of our partners helping to pack those boxes. Not only did folks come to the center to pick those up, but since we have so many agencies that have mobile components, they were able to take and deliver those to either homes or shelters that folks were staying in. We did two public events. We did one called Our Gathering of Hope that honored Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And then also a, we just had our second annual Survivor Art Gallery to honor sexual assault awareness and also child abuse awareness months. Those months are really important, and all of our cities participate in those months, whether it's through proclamations or acknowledgements or attending the events. And they're really important because they signal to folks that live in the city that their city sees them and understands what's happening and that they don't have to be silent, that their city can be a safe place to seek resources. So I thank you guys for participating and being one of the Washington County cities that helps to make sure that survivors feel safe inside of their cities. And then we were able to participate finally in, in a fantastic event called Shop with the Cop, where we were able to take twenty youth whose families had received services at the Family Justice Center and work with Washington County and Hillsborough Police Department to take those youth back to school shopping. Fred Meyer donates all of their back-to-school clothes that they need for the year. Families get to fill out a shopping list, and then we get to take them shopping. It's a fantastic event. The only reason I wake up at four o'clock in the morning, and the kids just have a really great time. So that was a great event that we'll get to do this next year as well. And so that pretty much covers what we wanted to talk about for this past year. So far this year, we are absolutely on track to serve the same, if not more, numbers of survivors. And so it just shows that our outreach, both in terms of what our, what our agencies are doing in order to help support survivors, as well as our cities and our community members. One of the things that we say that's very important is it's, it's, there's no one organization that's truly going to be able to interrupt and end the cycles of violence or abuse that folks encounter. There's not even, not even the Family Justice Center that's a collaborative of organizations is going to be able to do that on our own. It's really the partnership, the togetherness is what we always say amongst not just our organizations, but our cities and our community members that live in them. So thank you so much for everything that you guys have done over this past year and then also for giving me the opportunity to present on this, which raises even more awareness in the city about how survivors can be safe and that they do not have to be silent or alone anymore. So if anybody has any questions, I would love to answer those.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm not at all shocked that diapers are expensive. I'm worried now and how fast they go. I know we refer a lot of people to your guys' services that reach out to the city that just don't know where to go. And when I worked at Virginia Garcia, it was a main source of where we referred to as well. So thank you on behalf of the council for the work that you're doing for our community. I know some of our counselors have expressed interest in touring your facility and coming out and seeing it. So I'd love to have you connect with the scheduler that handles the council schedule stuff and invite anyone that would be interested in coming for a tour and having a little bit deeper discussion with you on services you provide and how we could help. So thank you for taking time to join us this evening.
Thank you so much. I'd be happy to do that.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we are on to our public hearing this evening, Agenda Bill two-three-one-zero-nine, ordinance number four-eight-four-one, an ordinance related to prohibited camping and adopting in City of Beaverton. I'm gonna pull up my script for us this evening. This is the time and place for a public hearing of an ordinance relating to prohibited camping and adopting Beaverton Code, Chapter five-point-one-eight, amending Beaverton Code, Chapter nine-point-zero-eight, and repealing Beaverton Code Sections five-point-oh-five-point-one-one-seven and five-point-oh-five-point-one-one-eight. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move into the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to explain how people can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's public hearing will begin with the staff presentation about the proposed camping ordinance. When staff concludes their presentation, council members may ask clarifying questions related to the information in the presentation. After the questions and answers between staff and council concludes, the mayor will then call on individuals who wish to speak about the proposed ordinance to provide public comment. After all public comments have been received, council members may ask staff or legal counsel for any additional information that may have been generated by those comments of the public. And after that is done, the public hearing will come to a close, and the council will move on to deliberations. With regard to the opportunity to provide public comment, anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. You can let the city recorder know you wish to speak either by clicking on the raise hand feature if you are online, or by pressing star nine if you are on the phone. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have up to two minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and address for the record. After each person finishes speaking, council members may ask questions of the speaker. I realize there's some people in the audience, and I believe, Mayor, you should decide how you want to call those people because that's unlike what we planned on, on, when we prepared the script. But when all public comments have concluded, council members should deliberate. But when all public comments have concluded, council members should deliberate and give feedback and direction to staff on the proposed ordinance, especially by answering the questions that will be posed by staff near the end of their presentation. That's all the, during deliberations, the council members may ask staff and legal counsel for any questions that are helpful to their discussions. And depending on the feedback and the directions provided by staff tonight, staff may make additional changes to the proposed ordinance. The ordinance, including any changes made on account of today's hearing and the input and feedback from council, will be the subject of a second public hearing scheduled for June sixth. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go ahead to a staff presentation. When staff finishes the presentation, council members will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff. And then after that, we will hear from the public.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Cia Lindstrom. I'm the interim assistant city manager. And we're here tonight to talk about HB thirty-one fifteen. So in two thousand and twenty-one, Oregon Legislature adopt House, adopted House Bill thirty-one fifteen or HB thirty-one fifteen. It no longer allows jur- local jurisdictions to ban camping outright on public property. Instead, we must meet new requirements for camping for those experiencing homelessness when no alternative shelter is available. This means our ordinances related to camping must be modified to meet the new requirements by July first, twenty-three. Three of us will be presenting tonight. In addition to me, you'll hear from Grace Wong with the City Attorney's Office and Lieutenant Steve Share with Beaverton Police Department. We also have several knowledgeable staff in the wings who will serve as resources as needed. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of our staff presentation tonight. In addition to the legal framework, background, and general information about HB thirty-one fifteen, we'll also review the timeline and a summary of stakeholder engagements before diving into the specifics of the draft ordinance. We'll finish up with discussion about implementation, education, enforcement, before moving to next steps. As a reminder, I'll just mention this. This is the first of two public hearings scheduled on this topic. The next one will be June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Grace Wong with the City Attorney's Office.
Thanks, Cia. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Grace Wong, one of the Assistant City Attorneys in the City of Beaverton. And tonight, I want to start my presentation with the legal framework, really stepping back from the subject on House Bill three one one five. Because there are some restrictions on how the city might proceed, I figure it would be helpful to the mayor and city councilors to talk about the parameters of the Eighth Amendment and existing case law. The principal areas of the Constitution that impact this work is the Eighth Amendment, specifically the cruel and unusual punishment clause. Now, not many people talk about the cruel and unusual punishment clause. Most people think of, oh, yeah, that means that I can't be drawn and courted or flogged by the governments. But it also means that there are some limits that are imposed on governments that places substantive limits on what we can say is criminal behavior, and that's applied, that's also under the Eighth Amendment clause. And recently, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals said and applied the Eighth Amendment to the following two cases, Martin versus Boise and Johnson versus Grants Pass. And essentially, with some limited exceptions, principally in a footnote of a case, Martin versus Boise, it says, so long as there is no option for sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize injudged homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter. So really, before we start talking about House Bill three one one five, these are the things that already constrict our ability to do as we wish. There are, there are limits on our ability to regulate based on the Eighth Amendment and Martin versus Boise and recently Johnson versus Grants Pass. Next slide, please. So now turning into the background. So the City of Beaverton in two thousand and eighteen had a problem. We were seeing a large encampment growing on Southwest Fifth and Western Avenue. They were principally RVs camping and staying for long periods of time. And in that time, they created sanitation and safety issues for the City of Beaverton. We were also starting to see other locations where there were RV encampments starting to crop up as well. So with all of that, the city decided in two thousand and eighteen to adopt a prohibited camping ordinance. And when they did so, they gave enforcement specifically to BPD Bike Team based on the Beaverton Police Department's police chief at the time. And now the BPD Bike Team is a well-versed group of individuals who are well-trained in dealing with individuals in crises. They are well-connected to the service providers, providing services to individuals experiencing homelessness. They are well-connected to businesses nearby who are impacted by them, by individuals experiencing homelessness. And last but not least, they are not tied to calls for service, which means that they are able to spend the time that they need to really connect with the peoples experiencing homelessness, getting to know them, and finding specific tailored resources to help them. And really, if the situation isn't resolved at this level of providing resources applicable to them, that and the activities generated are causing a nuisance or creating a safety issue, it is only at that point that BPD Bike Team starts consulting with our city prosecutor to determine how to proceed. And in looking at what's been done since two thousand and eighteen, when the city adopted this prohibited camping ordinance, we found that there's only been five cases referred to the city prosecutor for review under this specific ordinance. So in the five years, there's been five total cases reviewed by the city prosecutor. Next slide, please. Now, turning, now, or turning our attention specifically to House Bill three one one five, that is the, the bill that's creating the need for us to amend our existing prohibited camping ordinance. House Bill three one one five, now codified in ORS one ninety-five, five, three, zero, says it has, it requires all cities and counties to really look at their camping ordinances very closely and make sure that they are objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner with regards to persons experiencing homelessness. And that becomes operative July first, and that's the reason why we've been before council for the last, you know, several months. Next slide, please. Now, this is a timeline that I presented to council before, and I'm just reiterating this so that you can see where we were, where we are currently, and where I hope we get to, so that we can adopt our ordinance before the operative date of July one, two thousand and twenty-three. So back in March seventh, we presented to council. We got council feedback on the draft ordinance. We did more investigation in the month of April to refine our draft ordinance and get feedback from stakeholders. So now we're here today on May sixteenth, and we're holding our first public hearing on the draft ordinance. We hope to get all of your feedback and listen to all the people testifying, refine the ordinance based on the feedback given by council, and then hold a subsequent second public hearing on June sixth with the hopeful adoption before the July one timeframe. Next slide, please. And so, specific to what we've done since March seventh, we did a pretty big stakeholder engagement, public outreach process. We had a bilingual survey that was basically out for the month of April. We had several stakeholder feedback sessions, specifically we met with the chamber in early April to get their feedback on our proposed draft ordinance. We also had another specific stakeholder feedback session on April thirteenth with a number of service providers and neighboring jurisdictions. And with all the questions that were generated from those sessions and from the survey, we created a brand-new city webpage implementing House Bill three one one five. And we put on this webpage all the frequently asked questions that we got during this feedback session so that people are aware of what the city is doing. We also did a fact-finding portion to this. We investigated the four main questions that council had asked of staff to bring back to you tonight. We also did some additional ancillary code changes because we create, we decided that there were other sections that were really helpful to bring along for this project. And I'll talk about those two sections in greater detail in the next few slides. One of it's no intoxicant usage for certain city properties, specifically in the five tax lots that I identified in the agenda bill. And no storage of personal property if you are to be camping, under the exception to the ordinary prohibition. Next slide, please. So again, now I'm going specifically to the language in the draft ordinance. Some of this may look familiar to you because it is similar to what I presented in the March seventh work session. However, there have been some changes, and I will go with you slowly as to what those changes are. I've highlighted them either in yellow or bolded them in green. And if there are specific changes or options that are being presented to this evening, I'm going to outline what those options are and identify the staff recommended options, as well as giving the reason why it is the staff recommended option. Okay, with all that said, to start the overview, this draft ordinance maintains the overall prohibition on camping on the public right-of-way, like what we have from the two thousand and eighteen prohibited camping ordinance. We do add a new prohibition for city property under this draft ordinance, mostly because we want to make consistent the rules around camping for public property and for the public right-of-way. There are existing rules on no camping on certain city properties, so we're just bringing it under the umbrella of this new city chapter on prohibited camping. We've heard from some, some questions about whether this applies to schools or park districts. And really, this ordinance doesn't cover those, those, those properties. We're only talking about camping on the public right-of-way or the city properties. We do not, this ordinance does not touch private property or school or park district property. With this prohibition, there is an exception to the prohibition of camping, and that's only for people without alternative shelter. And that's a defined term. People without alternative shelter are people who are experiencing homelessness and who do not have an alternate shelter space or indoor space available to them. However, if you are camping under this exception, you must still follow all the time, place, and manner regulations listed. Next slide, please. So the time regulations, this slide is familiar to many here. It says that camping under this draft ordinance would be permitted between eight PM and eight AM. And after eight AM, all items must be packed away and the campsite removed. And in the last presentation with council, counselors were wondering if that is the appropriate timeframe. And so staff went back and discussed amongst themselves, consulted with neighboring jurisdictions. And then we, we investigated several options. Next slide, please. We investigated the timeframes of six AM, seven AM, eight AM, or nine AM for the end times for permitted camping. We are still recommending eight AM as an end time for the permitted camping because there are potential overtime costs for enforcement, and that would be problematic for the city. There are also fewer locations available for people experiencing homelessness at six AM or seven AM. And there's a neighbor, neighboring jurisdiction, Tigard, who's tentatively proposing a nine AM start time because that's when services are starting to open for people experiencing homelessness. However, we have also heard that nine AM may not be ideal for businesses because, and that might prove problematic as they're trying to get staff open for business. So with all these considerations that are further outlined in your packet tonight, staff still recommends an eight AM end time, despite some alternate recommendations by stakeholders. Next slide, please. Now, place regulations. That was a pretty involved conversation with city council, the last work session. We did keep that, you know, per hit, camping would be prohibited at any time on city property, except for safe parking guests on safe parking sites. However, the original proposal said that it was to be within one thousand feet of safe parking sites, shelters or properties where homeless services are provided. And the original proposal said it was within two, two hundred and fifty feet for schools or daycare centers and two hundred and fifty feet for the entrance or exit of a freeway. Now, there was some talk from counselors as to, you know, what is the practical distance? Like, what is the comparison that you can use to determine what actually is the distance between one hundred feet, five hundred feet, and a thousand feet? And I'm here to tell you that there, I looked up the distance of a football field, and I think that's three hundred and sixty feet. So one football field is three hundred and sixty feet, if that's a helpful comparator for, for folks. So tonight, there's a proposal to change the original proposal to perhaps five hundred feet for safe parking sites, shelters, or property where home, property where homeless services are provided, within either five hundred or two hundred and fifty feet for schools or daycare centers, or within five hundred or two hundred and fifty feet for entrances or exits or freeway. I detail more specifically what those options are in one, two, and three in the next slide, but I want to go over the stuff in green before I get to those options, one, two, and three. Now, this stuff in green was a recommendation from the city's traffic engineer. In the last council meeting, there was a desire expressed by some to really talk to experts and see what other safety issues might be cropping up because we do, under this proposed ordinance, allow people to camp within the right-of-way. And so when we consulted the city's traffic engineer, he recommended these two additional locations. One is within fifty feet of an intersection, and two is within ten feet of a fire hydrant, not to allow for camping in those two new locations. His point for those two locations is that intersections are frequently the locations where crashes occur, and it's going to be a big safety hazard for people to be camping in those locations. Another part of that is that there's going to be drivers who need to see where traffic is oncoming, and it'll be safer for them if they can see better without people camping and obstructing their, their sightlines. Another piece to that is that pedestrians need access to the, the corners of these intersections to be able to cross safely across the street. And for those reasons, that's why he would like the intersections to be included in this location. The other piece about fire hydrants is that firefighters need access to the water very quickly when fighting fires, and this would be a very helpful tool for them not to have people camping and blocking their access to a fire hydrant. Next slide, please. As I indicated as much, there's three options for place regulations for buffers. One is our simplicity option of having a standard five hundred feet for the locations that I listed in bold in the last slide, so that a police officer, when encountering someone in those locations, doesn't have to do a mental calculation of what distance buffer is needed for that location. The second option is to have enhancements for just the shelters, safe parking sites, and property where homeless services are provided, and a two hundred and fifty-foot lesser buffer for schools, daycare centers, and freeway entrances and exits. And for option three, we have a more buffer for the schools and daycare centers and leave the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer for only freeway entrances and exits. And those are just the options on the table at this point for options one, two, and three, with staffs recommending option one to proceed. Next slide, please. Now, a lot of the manner regulations have been kept the same. The only thing different is the one and four A in that we say we, you, when camping, you must not obstruct either pedestrian or vehicular traffic. So if you're trying to access your driveway, you mustn't block the, the driver from being able to get into the driveway. And if you are going to be on the sidewalk, you must still keep the thirty-six inches clearance at minimum. You must not start or maintain a fire, use a gas heater. You must not leave behind trash, bodily fluids, or waste, or discard hazardous materials. And again, you must not camp within a hundred and fifty feet of another campsite. Next slide, please. Again, must not erect or set up fixture or structure, must not dig, excavate, alter the ground, cause damage to vegetation or trees. Next slide, please. And again, we, we kept the five and six the same. The metrics will be provided to council in an annual report. And then the penalties maintains the penalties from the existing ordinance. Next slide, please. Now, this next section are two new code sections being proposed by staff. And the first one is no storage of personal property. Under existing city code in Sections nine point oh eight, one hundred, there is a rule that says you cannot leave personal property unattended, and that's been really helpful for police in enforcing these rules when people leave large amounts of personal property unattended as they go about their business, and city staff have to deal with consequences of having those properties unattended. And so we would like to take that citywide. So if you are going to be camping, under the exception to the general prohibition, we do not want people to be storing their personal property and leaving it unattended for the entire time that they are not allowed to be camping and then coming back to. uh, to all of this stuff at the campsite. Next slide, please. The second ancillary code change that's being proposed is that we, V P D. would like an additional tool to help them on certain city properties. And that is specifically, they do not want individuals using intoxicants on the five tax lots, principally the north and south plaza at the round, the Beaverton Library front lawn area, the city park, and the, the areas around city park. The maps for those five tax lots are in the agenda bill packet tonight. We do allow for an exception in this draft for alcohol at special events and as allowed by the O L C C. The reason why we would like this is that the V P D. bike team, when they're on the routes around the city, uh, those city properties, they see consumption of intoxicants while they're monitoring this five city properties related to private camping, and they would like this tool to stop this behavior. They think it would be more effective if they had this tool in their toolbox. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to turn it over to Steve to talk about Steve Share, the V P D. lieutenant, to talk about implementation, education, and enforcement. Thanks, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. I'm Lieutenant Steve Share with the Police Department. I hope to be half as smooth as Grace was. So this ordinance doesn't change a lot of how police deal with this situation on a day-to-day basis. The bike team and patrol officers regularly, regularly interact and get to know our homeless neighbors. And once this ordinance get, once this ordinance gets enacted, we will be training all of our officers in the entire police department on the ordinance. Officers also regularly communicate, especially the bike team, with our outreach team to help get resources for these folks. This ordinance will also give us the tools to address problems efficiently, and the times can motivate people to get going in the morning and look for alternative things to do besides just stay in their camp or tent. You know, they could go out and look for work, or, or get services, or counseling, or whatever type of stuff that they're looking for. And then, an additional aspect that we started looking at for businesses and property owners, this, this doesn't change that you still have the power to take control of your own property. And we recently put our trespass agreement up on the website, which will be an easy auto fill, auto fillable trespass agreement that will automatically come to my sergeant, Sergeant Lamb, like we would for traffic complaints and that type of stuff, and then we would be able to address those concerns. Thank you, everybody.
And with that, if we could go to next slide. So next steps, now that we've heard from both Grace and Lieutenant Share, we're gonna listen to your feedback. I think next steps in particular are any questions or clarifications you all have. We'll hold a second public hearing on June sixth and then adopt the ordinance. If you all are ready for that on June sixth, and repeal the existing prohibited camping ordinance, so that it would go into effect by July first. Next slide, please. So here are the key points after your discussion, and you received public testimony, public comments. The key decision points that staff is looking for direction from council on tonight in preparation for June sixth. Number one, should the eight A M. be the end time for permitted camping? Number two, should five hundred feet be the buffer for the listed locations? And are the additional buffers acceptable, namely fire hydrants and intersection? Number three, are there additional ancillary code sections? Are those acceptable to you around intoxicants and storage of personal property? And four, are there any other sections you would like staff to modify or change? With that, that is the end of our presentation, and we're happy to accept questions if you have them.
As a reminder to the council, this next session is about questions of the staff not deliberating on the question. So if you have questions that are going to help you get to the deliberating questions, this is the time for that. Counselor Hessen?
Yes, thank you, Grace, Lieutenant, and Sia. Two questions. On slide thirteen, you mentioned manner regulations, which is like must not leave behind trash, bodily fluids, or waste, or discard hazardous materials. Curious, like, what does the enforcement and/or, like, what does that look like? I think I heard from a business owner that said that just doesn't happen, so I'd love to hear, like, your thoughts.
Thank you, councilor. I appreciate that. And Lieutenant Share, would you field that for us?
Yeah, so it would allow us to hold people accountable that are leaving stuff behind, especially waste and that type of stuff. We typically know who is where, and the bike officers regularly photograph and with body worn cameras have, you know, a clear, easy availability to say this person was here during this time. So, so to hold people accountable to clean up after themselves is not difficult. It would be more difficult if it's like an existing long camp that we come across that's in the woods someplace and somebody's left it. And in that case, we, we have things in place to be able to clean that stuff up.
Okay, like, is it possible that, that we are ending up having to do that? And I'm just curious because I'm trying to think of, like, who's responsible for that?
Well, we do have some grants that we utilize in our, our operations. We work in connections with them, and it works really good. But unfortunately, they do spend a fair amount of time cleaning up stuff. Like, there was some stuff left on Hall Boulevard, Tannanier Greenway for a few days, and Ops went out and cleaned it up. So it's just communication within the city.
Okay, and then the next question was if you, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'd love to just have it, like, elaborate on what intoxicants are. One minute, please.
Uh, well, the intoxicants, the one that is most publicized right now is fentanyl, and we did see quite a bit of smoking of fentanyl around the library when we were monitoring stuff a while back. Others is methamphetamines and marijuana. And I think the idea of controlling some of the ability to do this is in a similar fashion as cigarettes is a pretty good plan.
Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. Um, so in the agenda bill, not on the slide deck, on page thirteen, where we're defining a person experiencing homelessness, I'm curious if it should be an or rather than an and. And, hold on, I got too many tabs open here. But, um, I was just curious if, if, as we're talking about someone who's unsheltered, if it's, it means a person who lacks a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, but is or, should it be or adequate nighttime residence?
Hi, I can take that. Um, yeah, this was an Oregon revised, uh, it, Oregon administrative rule on a person experiencing homelessness. And to extent, I don't have to reinvent the wheel. I would want it to keep it consistent of like, this is what the state has said is a person experiencing homelessness. And so I copied and pasted that definition into this ordinance.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And I couldn't tell from what I saw in the draft, Washington County, but for nearby jurisdictions that are right, that are choosing to go with regulating time, place, and manner, are there manner regulations coming out similar to ours?
Yes.
Okay.
Very similar.
Sorry?
Very similar.
Okay. And then I think mine is maybe kind of a, a follow-up to Counselor Hussin's question, where if the, if someone's belongings are not removed by eight A M. and they left them where they slept overnight, is it something where lieutenant, like, those things would be collected in the moment? Or like, what, like, you know, is, is there a chance for someone to go get their things? Are they notified that their things will be removed or anything like that?
Yeah, our officers are, are really patient and reasonable in these situations. And talking back to Grace's example of there being like five examples, best situations, we work with people to try to get them into a better place. We very seldomly would ever go to just, you know, arresting or that type of stuff. We, we work regularly with the city attorney's office when there are things that need to be cleaned up, and oftentimes, we might cite people and then use that sort of as a carrot to get them to clean stuff up and then, then dismiss the citation. So we're definitely not super assertive with this, but sort of assertive enough to get the job done.
Okay. Um, and then my last question is, um, in subsector, in five point one eight point zero eight zero, the penalties. Um, and I know, like, you know, Lieutenant Share, you kind of elaborated already, and we've seen from history of how we've interacted with people experiencing homelessness, that we don't go straight to like a penal resolution. But it, my question is, um, did we consider an escalated enforced, an escalation of enforcement process? I saw Washington County had something about escalation in theirs about, it was like engagement warning violation. Do we have something like that?
I don't, we always have discretion, and I have confidence in how we deal with these situations that I don't necessarily like to limit the officers to have to go through a certain stance because every situation can be different. But I guarantee you, they will make every option possible before we, we have to address it with somebody having to go to jail or that type of stuff. So, so that stuff automatically occurs, and, and we regularly do build relationships and, and try to get people into better situations. So we almost, we, we know almost everybody out there by name, and, and that's a good thing. And when we don't know somebody by name or recognize them, we get to know them, and, and that works really well.
Thank you.
Counselor Tibnan?
Thank you. I have three questions. Hopefully, they're fairly quick, because I know we've got a lot of other questions on the plate. First one is kind of dovetails onto what you just said about forming relationships, getting to know people by their first names. I think one of the concerns I have, and that I've heard from some folks that have reached out, is how could they possibly know where they can go with all these restrictions we're putting into place? I imagine once they're educated, they know after that. But there is the process between that, and there's always potential for, for, for new folks coming in that you'll interact with. So my question is, has there been any conversation about creating some sort of a map or other type of handout that you can give to them that can serve as that resource to direct them to where they are allowed to camp?
We have talked about some signage in certain areas to make it clear, but I think the stance was that we didn't really want to create established camp areas. So as we go forward with this and educate people, it, it's going to be, just like we talked about before, where, where if somebody's in a place they can't be, we'll explain to them and get them into a, a better area. And, and pretty soon, word of mouth with everybody gets around. And, and if it's somebody that we've never seen before, and there's someplace that they can't be under this ordinance, then that, that will get communicated in a, in a, you know, non-threatening, non-penalty sort of way. We would much rather work with people than, than work against them.
Okay. Well, I, as a follow-up to that, I do think this is kind of groundbreaking stuff for the city, and we shouldn't be wetting ourselves to any particular decision we make tonight without reviewing it after a specific period of time to see how it's playing out with interviews with the bike team, with interviews with folks that are experiencing homelessness, so that we know if there's confusion that arises from that, there's anything that we need to do to, to shore up the ability to successfully direct people to, to where it's allowed or, or to resources, you know, how are we doing in general with that? So then, a next one is, and this, I brought this up at the work session, and I, I would just like to clarify this for the council, for those listening, and also for myself to, to hear it out loud, and this is probably a question for the city attorney. The language that's, that's being reviewed is that it is unlawful to tell someone that they can't be somewhere if they have nowhere else to go, and you have nowhere to, to tell them to go or to show them how to get their, you know, resources. And House Bill thirty-one fifteen is directly related to if there are no alternatives in terms of shelter, then camping will be permitted in certain areas. If there is shelter that we can direct them to, camping is prohibited within the city. My question is, even with the shelter that's going to be coming online in Beaverton, we're only going to have about sixty beds, I understand, give or take. And if we have more individuals in need, can we refer them to beds that are in Tigard or Hillsborough or elsewhere in Washington County, in essence, outside of the city limits? Or does that get us sideways of, of this House bill?
Counselor Tibnan, I'll start this and then let the city attorney's office finish initially answer to this. We are part of a county-wide referral system for sheltering. So we, along with other jurisdictions in the county, work together on that sheltering referral system. And so it does mean that we are automatically part of that cooperative service. We can hear a little bit more from Megan on details of that if you're interested. But if we stick just to the legal question you're, you're asking right now, I think it's important to realize that we are part of that regional, that, that county-wide referral system. And then Grace or Bill, I'll let you tag team then on your legal opinion related to that.
There is some language in the Johnson versus Grants Pass case that says that the shelter should be within city limits. But the fact pattern that Washington County has and that the city has with this county-wide referral system for people experiencing homelessness was not a fact that Grants Pass could use to support their argument. So there are distinguishing factors between that original case and the current case. But we should have some strong documentation showing this referral system and that the city has this officially.
Look, you know why I'm here? I'm here right now. That's why I'm here. Right carry.
Washington County. So that's, people are aware that this is a, a formal, established relationship with Washington County and the city. The other piece to it is that even if we are a part of the county-wide referral system, we should also have it be reasonably available to the person experiencing homelessness that we say that there is this alternative shelter available to them. So if we say like, oh, we're part of this county-wide system, and that person experiencing homelessness can't get to it very easily, I don't think a judge will look very kindly to that. So those are the two factors, I think, that could be distinguishing. But again, it's untested, and it would be something that the city wouldn't consider.
Okay, and just to, to, I think we have to be really serious about this. I, I, we're hearing a lot from people in our community that are heartsick over this in one way or another. And I, I've heard from an individual whose relative was homeless, and they were on the phone for hours trying to find a place for this person. This person wanted shelter, and there was none that they could find, calling place after place after place. Most of the places either didn't pick up the phone, or if they did, they referred them to some other place. That place referred them to some other place, and finally, he found a place in Eugene. And I, I think it's, it's unfair, and it should be tested in the courts, that this is a city limits kind of thing when this is a regional problem that we're facing, and there are no boundary lines for folks that have nowhere to go. But if we're, if we are going to put this in the language, and we are going to have communication with our neighbors around Washington County, then we do have to find a way to help them and transport their stuff to where the resources are. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll stop with that one. But the, the last one I had, and this is a sticky one, is I understand from, from everything I've been learning and getting educated on of why there's a buffer around the shelter. That being said, we have Griffith Park, which is very close to the shelter, but only half of it falls within that five hundred foot buffer. The other half doesn't. There's a lot of chatter going on in our community and a lot of it is misinformed, like the thing I'd said about this, that this is, the shelter will be in uh, it will, there's not been any discussion about being a no barrier shelter. There's also people saying that we've designated Griffith Park as a place where people can camp, which has not been discussed as your PowerPoint has shown. Um, it's also a designated sump and overflow for when it floods. This is uh, something that I think is, we should be having a conversation on making that park off limits for a few reasons. Um, but I, I, so that's something I wanted to throw out there for consideration as well. Those are, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
If I could just respond to that in terms of um, the Griffith Park, that's a good example of the scope of this ordinance. Uh, Griffith Park is controlled by the Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District. We are not going to be enacting rules that are rules that the park district needs to adopt. So the answer would be you need to go check with the park district and see what their rules are going to be about property that they have. Same thing with the school district, same thing with private property. So with regard to that Griffith Park example, uh, we are not permitting camping at Griffith Park. The Twelton Hills Park and Recreation District needs to control its own property.
Okay, that's very useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, I'm gonna tag in for a few minutes and then Counselor Doug, you're up next.
Well, thanks, Council President. I've got a few questions. The first, uh, three one, House Bill three one one five. Compel THPRD in the Beaverton School District to implement this as we're doing. Or is this only related to municipalities and towns?
I can take that. Um, that is uh, specifically stating uh, all city and county have to do this because it says any city or county law must be objectively reasonable. So it, it doesn't talk about special districts or schools or others, other government entities. This is cities and counties.
So help me, let me follow up with that then. If, if THPRD chooses not to do something, does that just open up their property to camp? I think we have to compel them uh, to, to focus on rules hopefully similar to ours. Otherwise, we're going to have a very strange patchwork for regulations. Um, and, and it's going to be unfair to everyone involved, right? But I think, I think that's a gap that, that, I don't know if, you know, we can't legally compel them to, but I think that's a gap that we should strongly encourage them to standardize that right here. Sorry, I got a message. My mic is muffled, so I will try to lean a little bit forward.
How about now? Maybe a little bit better. Cool. Um, second question, uh, Counselor Tivnan did mention that uh, there's, there's public undertone out there that this is no barrier shelter, which she clarified isn't true. But I do have a question relating to that. So what if we allow or what if someone engages in behavior that would, would allow them to not be in our shelter, right? If, if they, if we have a set of rules and we say this, this is the behavior we expect you to participate in in our shelter and you purposely get yourself excluded from the shelter, uh, does that allow you to camp?
Grace, you want to take that one on?
No, I think I'm gonna, I give that to Greg.
So, good evening, uh, mayor and city councilors. My name is Greg Brown. I'm the city prosecutor uh, uh, for the city of Beaverton, one of the two. Uh, so uh, your question sort of gets at uh, uh, some of the uh, gray areas of the Grants Pass and Boise decisions. The short answer to your question is I would personally feel comfortable uh, arguing that in essence, if you've created your exclusion from uh, the alternative shelter available to you, uh, uh, that uh, that doesn't essentially open up to, uh, uh, open you up to being able to camp everywhere. So in other words, uh, if I think a behavior exclusion uh, is different than uh, an exclusion for uh, uh, other reasons or uh, for example, one of the limitations in the Grants Pass case, right, was that there were some shelters available, but they were um, uh, you have to agree to certain religious tenants uh, uh, or other obligations in order to stay there. So I think uh, uh, a behavior-based exclusion is a horse of a different color uh, and as the person who would be uh, uh, sort of putting that forward, I feel comfortable making that argument.
Oh, thank you. Um, moving on to the intoxicant ban. Help me understand what's going to happen if a person is caught using the intoxicants. And I want to clarify this a little more and, and contextualize it. I, I spoke with uh, one of the judges here at um, in Beaverton Municipal Court. And uh, she let me know that almost all the measure one ten citations that they see are no-shows, right? So if we're just going to do a sort of citation, uh, if someone does, and I know uh, Lieutenant Sherry, you had mentioned relationships and I absolutely think that's the right way to go. But in the situation that that's not the case, um, I'm concerned that we're going to issue citations and people are just not going to show up. She let me know there was a ninety-seven percent rate of people not showing up, if I understand that correctly. So I, I'm just concerned about um, the ability to keep people, you know, off some of these really addictive drugs, in, in particular uh, in, in this ordinance. So I don't know if anyone has any comments on that. If there's other enforcement mechanisms specifically that we could do.
Um, I'll start this. One, one of the enforcement mechanisms that we can do with this is trespass. So if they're doing this in a place they're not allowed to do it, um, a violation is a recourse that we can do, but we can also ask them, once we give them the violation to leave, we see them again there or they choose not to leave, then we have a trespass issue, which is actually.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. I, I hadn't thought of the trespassing. So uh, my last question, um, gonna reference Counselor Tivnan again. Uh, I think we're twins tonight, Allison. Um, Counselor Tivnan mentioned communication to folks that camp. Um, and, and that was really helpful. I'm also concerned about our commu- ability to communicate this to residents and businesses. Uh, there's a lot of noise in this system right now. There's a lot of concern. I share a lot of the concern uh, on both sides of this argument. But one thing I think most of us, if not all of us can agree on is we need to communicate this out. We need to communicate it over and over and over. Uh, because people are busy, you know, they, they don't have, you know, we need to, every mechanism for communication, we need to do it and then we need to do it again and then one more time at least, right? Like, so how are we going to help folks in our business community, folks that live uh, in areas affected by this? I mean, which technically is the whole city, but mostly in central Beaverton, right? Like, how are we going to over-communicate and then do it again, right? Help me, help me feel better that, that we have a plan in place to communicate not only what these rules are, but the impact and what they can do when things, uh, you know, if something goes wrong or if they have questions around the rules. Uh, if they don't know who to report, like, like, help me, help me feel a little bit better about that.
Lieutenant Share, you want to take on the beginning of that? And then we can talk a little bit about citywide as well.
Well, we've, we've had some discussions and I know Greg Brown and I have talked about actually putting together some business kind of knack meetings where everybody would be able to come. I'm sure we could do it virtually as well. And we could, you know, go over a summary of basically what, what they're able to control on their property. Um, and make it clear how to deal and who to call and all that type of stuff to address those concerns. Um, we are absolutely happy to do that. Um, and we could do it, you know, a few times. Um, so that's something we've talked about. I also, our bike officers do spend a lot of time rolling around the downtown core area. And they are more than happy to communicate with businesses and, and homeowners in the area. Um, so those are two ways the police department can address it. Like I spoke about in quickly in our, when I talked earlier, we put trespass agreements up that are accessible to be able to utilize for um, property owners to be able to fill out easily online and be able to just forward and on, so it'll go to Sergeant Lamb, who then can go out and individually talk to these folks and make sure that they're indeed in control of the property and have the ability to, to do what they want to do. And then also he'll have the time to, to talk to them individually and answer questions.
And Counselor Duggar, in addition to that, um, we have our city website um, that we can use as a tool, citywide information sources. We can also um, enhance our business toolkit. Um, and so this actually um, kind of becomes part of our overall education and outreach on homeless services and homelessness issue.
So, thank you for.
Remind counsel, this is a portion of the agenda to ask questions about what was presented to us. What we're getting now is into implementation, so make sure uh, this is a public hearing and we need to follow the process.
I think, I think the, the communication question is really important to me because uh, I think it does impact some of my ability to, to process this. So I, I do have um, just one more thing around that, like uh, I think one pages are really good and I think we might need to over-communicate with, with outlining because there's a lot of questions in the community. Or even around whether this is private property, you know, what can I do on my business, my home? Can, you know, are, are we allowing this or that and the other on my, in front of my door, are we going to allow people to sleep? The reality is we are in Portland Metro and people have had a very different experience if they go to our neighbor to the east uh, than in Beaverton and we need to over-communicate that. That, that, that concludes my questions. Thank you all for putting this together. It was really helpful.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes, thank you. I have two questions and they're both related to the buffers. It, and Tiger's proposed codes, I think it's Tigers, they had a buffer around environmentals, environmentally sensitive lands. Did we talk about anything like that with staff over here in Beaverton?
We did, and I'm gonna let um, the attorney's office talk a little bit about why we didn't feel that was as necessary. Grace, is that one you can take on?
No, I'm going to give this to Greg.
Greg, okay.
Because he works with BPD on, on these issues.
Great, thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, Counselor Teeter, um, to answer your question, uh, the biggest thing that uh, concern that we have uh, with regard to camping in these environmentally uh, sensitive areas uh, are in, around waterways. There's actually already a state level crime uh, that prohibits uh, littering uh, in and around waterways. I believe it's within a hundred feet of a waterway. So the same sort of uh, environmental impact concerns uh, that Tiger raised, I believe uh, we already address through uh, enforcement of state level laws.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you, Greg. And then the second was about a buffer around MAX stations. Is that something that was considered or talked about?
Again, counselor, uh, the MAX property is uh, it's uh, to put it bluntly, its own thing. Uh, in the sense that uh, the uh, uh, the TriNet uh, uh, Transportation District manages that property and has their own uh, separate rules uh, in exclusion pri- criteria for TriNet property.
Okay, do you know what their, what their buffer or exclusions are?
Uh, counselor, I know they don't allow camping on TriNet property. Um, and they don't uh, uh, prohibit uh, uh, persons to remain in transit vehicles uh, after the time that the uh, uh, the lines, especially for the MAX, et cetera, have stopped running uh, or when the bus gets to the end of the line. I don't know if they have a specific s- square footage allotment or setback away from TriNet property that extends to people camping there. Um, but certainly as somebody uh, who used to uh, help enforce uh, TriNet rules through my work with the district attorney's office, uh, I know that, you know, TriNet property extends to the areas sort of immediately around uh, the uh, the, the property, including for example, the sidewalks, things like that. Uh, so it's pretty close, but there, I'm not aware of any specific, you know, square footage setback that TriNet has.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes, um, thank you for presentation. I think most of the counselors asked the questions that I wanted to ask. Um, the question that I have is uh, coming back to Counselor Tivnan's question. There are the shelter, um, it's right next to Griff- Griffith Park and it's within five hundred feet. And we are now told uh, or we just learned that it's, it's managed by the THPRD, but depends on what they do, um. We can send out mixed messages because everybody knows that's the city-owned park and it's, it's within the city limits, so, so people assume that it is the city park. And they're all worried about maybe having encampment happening there. Do we ever consider maybe having thousand feet buffer near the shelter or at the library where people congregate during the day?
Counselor Kimmy, Kimmy, we did look at um, at the possibility of thousand-foot buffer. Um, and um, it is, uh, it does create rather large buffers that cover a good chunk of the city. And it does um, make it more difficult, the objective, objectively reasonable standpoint.
Right. I, I do understand that, but I'm just saying just around the shelter area.
Hmm, okay. You know, I would, um, I'll bow to Mayor, Mayor Beatty, but um, that may be something we want to take up during the, um, when we start talking about the policy.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you. Um, just one, one other question is, um, the, regards to the vehicle that I know it was prohibited camping in two thousand eighteen. So that's still in effect. What, what I'm worried about is uh, people, not just right of the way, people camping on the sidewalk, but people camping on the road and do we, how's the law regards to that?
Around camping on, on uh, roadways in particular?
Right, like RV or a car camping on the road and residency area and business districts.
Great.
Yeah, so this still brings over that prohibition of car camping. The definition of camping includes using a, a vehicle or any part of a vehicle. So it does still maintain that prohibition.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I don't have any questions. Um, I've had all my questions answered ahead of tonight's meeting. So we are moving into the portion where we will hear public input. Uh, city recorder has alerted me that we do have one person uh, in the chambers. I'll give them the courtesy of going first. Uh, Rhonda, you'll have two minutes to address the council when you are primed up and ready to speak. Uh, as a reminder, you need to give your name and address on record. And if you speak to the council during the public comment, there is the ability for the council to ask people questions. So just be prepared for that.
Council members, Mayor Rhonda Raister. I live in South Beaverton. Prefer to not give out my personal address. Thank you. It is on record since I do have a contract with the city of Beaverton. Managing the executive suites here in the Beaverton building where we have a hundred and seven businesses bringing well over half a million dollars into the taxpayers of Beaverton. I'd like to first say that two minutes for a public hearing? Wow, um, do you really want to hear from the public? We used to have five minutes, but I know with the change of government, there's a lot of things that have changed that apparently I'm not caught up to speed on. Kind of like virtual council uh, meetings. I know during COVID, that was probably warranted, the executive suites and the businesses that we have here on the third floor, we never. probably warranted. The executive suites and the businesses that we have here on the third floor, we never closed down. But we did have to navigate during a lockdown building for 18 months that we were left to fend for ourselves. So just want to put that out there. We did send several emails, multiple businesses, because communication has been very vague, including the survey awareness, the public safety forum that was held last Tuesday at the Beaverton Chamber. The Beaverton Chamber seems to be the point of contact that the city is using to reach out to the business community. However, as an example, during that public forum, there were maybe, there was one property owner, maybe five or six business owners. But don't know the Beaverton Chamber membership count. I know we had at least 6,000 business license holders in Beaverton. Not sure where they were. There's an assumption that we're all looking at the city website. How are we supposed to know when new pages are added? Like, I just learned tonight, there's a new House Bill 3115 website page. Wasn't aware of that. How is how is that communication getting out? I think it's really critical. Back in the day, working for Dorn Platts here, I've been part of this property for 20 years. Lived at this property for two years, been managing these executive suites under private ownership, now public ownership. And how is the communication getting out to us? We used to have, there was several of our officers that would be our community engagement officers. We would sit around the table either in the training center or the BG properties next door in their conference room. And we would have the business community, the residents in this downtown community, all around the table where we can have open candid conversations, but now we're limited to a two-minute public comment. One of the things in the package, the 79-page package that I read, there's five parcels. There's no page numbers. I think it might be page five clearly showing the Beaverton round. And I hope I'm misunderstanding that the two parcels.
I'll let you go over by a minute if you could wrap up your comments.
We would like to know what is a reasonable timeline that we as business community and taxpayers of Beaverton should expect a response from our elected officials when we do send a request for a meeting, a request for feedback. What's an expected reasonable time that we should have? And just to let you know, I did go to the city council website. The webpage says right on the first page that listen, listening to the community, public safety in Beaverton. By the way, the last update was in April of 2021, so I'm not sure that you're listening to us. We've been screaming at the top of our lungs since March. It led to a Pamplem Beaverton Valley Times article today. So help us understand, when are you going to come and sit at the table with us so that we can be part of the solution? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next is Saham.
Hi, my name is Saham Nuri Sadeh and my address is 7160 Southwest 166 Terrace 97007. First, I want to thank the Beaverton City Council and all those involved in drafting this ordinance update as requested by House Bill 3115. I'm here today to voice my support for stricter regulation and enforcement for the encampments in our city. Luckily, the encampment situation in our city compared to Portland and Multnomah County is comparatively much less severe. This should not be taken for granted as poor policies and lack of enforcement could certainly lead us to an irreversible path. The solution to what we see happening on our streets must be practical, sustainable, and empowering those who are in need. Permitting tents and encampments is not an act of compassion. Allowing unsanctioned and improvised living structures to sprawl is a stain on our community and not a badge of honor. Housing affordability is certainly one of the multitude of factors contributing to the growing encampment problems. However, we have, we can never solve this problem by ignoring the addiction, mental health, and the brazen abuse of taxpayer dollars and goodwill by those who seek to profit from sustaining the status quo. I have a longer statement, but I'll just jump right into it. The the only concern that I have is that I refer you to a report published by the Oregonian on February 21st of this year. That according to the data provided by Multnomah County, of the roughly 1,700 homeless individuals offered shelter during city sweeps of encampments over the prior 10 months, two-thirds of people declined the offer of temporary shelter. And eventually, 89% of those individuals are back sleeping unsheltered somewhere in the city. So my concern is that while our resources are being invested in creating shelters and homeless services, there's no authority to ensure that they are used and our current ordinance draft does not seem to have a way to address this. Thanks.
Thank you. Ben?
Yes, I wanted to just say thank you for being here tonight. I'm hoping everybody can hear me okay. My name's Ben Hellickson and I'm one of the owners of Mattson Hellickson Dental. We're at 4720 Southwest Washington, right on the corner of Washington and Second. And we love being part of the Beaverton compu- Beaverton community. The concerns we have obviously with with the camping ordinance here are one of which is the time, the timeline proposed. I'd personally like to see it pushed back later in the evening. And and earlier in the morning, big proponent of the 6:00 AM time. I employ my entire staff is is women, 13 females that get there between 6:30 and 7 o'clock in the morning. Our patients start arriving at seven and it's a safety issue for us. We want to keep our staff safe and our patients safe. I think a lot of the concern with us is just the possibility and most likely result of this is going to have be more transients and drug addicted, unsheltered, coming from Multnomah County into our community. And I guess my question is, you know, to the to the council members and to some of the people that have spoken tonight is, you know, do we foresee an increase in the homeless community? And especially some of those drug addicted, more violent homeless community coming from Multnomah County now that we're opening our doors here in Washington County. I think it's, you know, safe to say that Measure 110 has been a complete failure and it all stems from drug addiction. And I think that most of what we're concerned about as a business owner in downtown Beaverton is just keeping our patients and our staff as safe as possible. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Nathan?
Hi, yeah, Nathan LaFontaine. My address is 5305 Southwest Main Avenue. I gave comment earlier. I don't know if I can give comment again on this issue. Hopefully that's okay.
Yes, you can. Keep going.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say I really appreciated the presentation. Ahead of this presentation, I got a bunch of like scary emails about this. That kind of made me feel like Beaverton was gonna turn into like some kind of like Mad Max-ish like Thunderdome scenario, but the like ordinance seems extremely reasonable to me. I am like very confused about what everyone is so frightened about here. I am really grateful for all of the hard work the council put in here to try and design an ordinance that complies with state law, which requires you to come up with a reasonable set of rules. It seems like you've done a great job there. So yeah, thanks for your work. That's all for me.
Thank you. Maggie Myers?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Maggie Myers. I live at 13460 Southwest Bonnie Bray Street in Beaverton. I'm a resident of Central Beaverton where there is a large concentration of people experiencing houselessness. So this issue is very important to me. And my perspective as a resident and as a person who is deeply concerned about the lack of shelters and access to other housing and human services in our area is that anyone experiencing houselessness at any point in time should be free to camp in all city parks, natural areas and other green spaces, in any vacant lots owned by the city and on the perimeters of city parking lots and perimeters of city-owned buildings. I also think that it's critical to establish that encampments or those camping within city limits should only be asked to leave or removed from those areas in situations in which they pose a safety issue or if climate conditions pose a life-threatening or significant danger to those camping. And in that case, I think that we, as the city, should be prepared to provide temporary shelters and offer assistance transporting people to those shelters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? I I live at the Round, 12600 Southwest Crescent Street. I'm the chair of our HOA and I also have a business around the corner. So I'm a little concerned about not so much the start time because we have a tap house, but the end time when or the late time when people can start camping. But I have neighbors with a coffee shop, so 8:00 AM seems like it would be a problem for my neighbors. We are uniquely situated because, as Counselor Teeter pointed out, we're right next to the MAC station, which has a lot of benefits for us, but we do have a lot of homeless people who oftentimes appear to have mental health issues, you know, wandering up and down the platform, yelling and screaming. I have neighbors who are in, you know, adjacent to the amphitheater who often have to call the police on homeless people who are having mental health issues. So not having a buffer around the MAC station is a concern not only for my business neighbors, but we have a lot of elderly people who live here who I'm very concerned about. We've just gone through a process of trying to further harden our security entrances, but we still occasionally will have homeless people sleeping in our stairwells. I don't think they're generally a threat, but again, you don't know. And we have elderly, vulnerable people, so that's very much a concern for us. I do worry about people camping in environmentally sensitive places because we're right across from Beaverton Creek. And I do know that there are people camping under the bridge, for example, across halls. So anyway, all those things are concerns for me. And I would hope you would really think about this area around the central station MAC area because I think it does deserve a little special attention and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. City Recorder, is there anyone else waiting to address the council?
No, there is not mayor.
Counsel, do you have any questions of anyone that gave public testimony this evening? Okay, I will now close the public hearing for tonight and move to council deliberation on proposed ordinance. For those watching, depending on the feedback and direction given tonight, staff will make changes to the proposed ordinance. The revised draft ordinance will be subject of a second public hearing scheduled for June 6. Okay. Counsel? I'll just, how about I open it up with some of my thoughts this evening. This is a very challenging prospect. We've been dealing with this issue as long as I was the mayor and and longer than that, when I served on the city council. When we are dealing with issues on Fifth and Western, you know, the city is addressing this issue multifaceted. We have safe parking programs. We have our severe weather shelter. We secured the funding for a year-round shelter. We are moving as fast as we can with state mandates that are directed on top of us, on top of the federal mandates, on top of us as we're trying to accomplish this. We are the level of government held responsible for this problem, yet we don't have all the tools and we don't get to make all of the rules. I just say that as I'm setting the plate to say that we have been begging the state for resources. I spend the majority of my time in Salem in the last couple of weeks, working in consultation with other cities, making sure that we have enough resources to address this humanitarian crisis that's unfolding on top of us. On top of our regulatory issue, we have special districts. We've taught a lot, talked a lot tonight about our special district park, who by the way, does not allow overnight camping in their parks already. They did this a long time ago, even before the issues that exist in today's climate. I am great with the staff recommendation of trying to keep it as simple as possible. I think moving forward with that recommendation is the right way to go. We have talked and considered everything about smoking, hallucinants, about whether drugs you can do in property. This council has met multiple times and talked through a lot of issues. So I want people to know that are watching, this is not the first time. This is probably not the 10th time we've talked about this topic. And we have had so many of our thoughts incorporated into tonight's ordinance. And most importantly, our staff has been working on a team across the entire county with other cities and the counties working on this ordinance together. So we are not in this alone. This is not a silo. And the city of Portland is considering the same ordinance. The city of Tigard is under the same ordinance and the city of Hillsborough is considering the same times. I feel really comfortable with the work that we've done on this. But to echo a couple of my counselors' questions with starting with Counselor Tivnan, I agree, we need to revisit this in six and 12-month increments and have a regular check-in time. And the council can have some more directives on the kind of data we want to see from staff that is appropriate from this body to make of our staff once we pass this ordinance in June. No matter what the compromise is, I would like us to have a regular check-in too. And to Counselor Duggar's point, we do need a communication strategy and a plan on how we're going to outreach and not just from the city website. How are we going to empower our police officers to deliver this information when they're addressing people? How do property owners address the issue? And they already have some rights that we don't have. They can bar camping on their sites as it is now. They didn't need us to do that for them. So tonight, I am I am going to move with the staff's recommendation. That's where I'm at this evening. Okay, Council President.
Thank you. I I was, I wanted to also ask her, Counselor Hudson's note, can we see those questions up again? Because I know there were some specific things we were asked to get feedback on tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start with my answers to these questions. And then I just want to speak a little bit about how I'm thinking and feeling about these things. So I think 8:00 AM is the right time to end permitted camping, given our budget and staffing constraints. So I think that that is reasonable. I think that the 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 adjustments to the buffers are appropriate, has been changed post our last set of comments. I think the intoxicant addition especially is important to our code to give us a tool to make sure that not only do we have a social contract that is unwritten, but that we have an actual ordinance in hand to kind of help us with the tools of kind of enforcing that we can't use intoxicants in public in this way. I also hope that it leads to maybe people making safer choices. I know that drug addiction is really challenging, but you know, with how prolific fentanyl is, really hoping that it's a tool in our toolbox through this really challenging thing. The storage of personal property one is one that I can live with where it's at right now, but as I brought up in previous meetings, I do think it's important for us to get to that point where we have some sort of a day center. We have somewhere that people can store their things so that I can feel really good about this being objectively reasonable. I think it would be really hard every day to pack up my things and move. And so I can live with where it's at, but per Counselors Tivnan and Mayor Beatty, that chance of us looking at six and 12 months, I would love to have an opportunity for us to be getting updates on our progress on a day center. Or I'm not even sure what the right word is, but something where people can safely store their belongings during the day. When I was reading through the proposed ordinance and in Section 5.18.020E, it states that the enactment of this chapter is necessary to protect the peace, health, and safety of the city and its inhabitants. And that's something that I have to really think about. I really appreciate that the word that's used is inhabitants. To me, that's not just citizens. That is people, anyone who may inhabit our area. And that can also be like, you know, nature, right? And and the wildlife that's around. And so I think that things like the regulation around fire is important for the safety of multiple types of inhabitants in our community. But as I mentioned, like, there's that unwritten social contract and part of being in the community is that we abide by that. And that contract to me also means that we would be kind to one another. We do everything in our in our possible, like, everything that we can do to make things better for members of our community. And I wish that we were in a time of abundance of resources and that we could just and that um we could just pay and house everyone, that we could build all the housing that we needed, that we could afford to put everyone in private um housing uh while we help them through these things that they're facing. And we're not there. And as Mayor, as Mayor Beatty stated and as we saw through the presentation of tonight's hearing, we talked a lot about the federal laws that we're dealing with and the state laws that we're dealing with. And we're now in a place where the best thing that we can do, given our limited resources, and being told that we have to, not being, I mean, that's the way our government and society works, right? Is that we have to follow the laws. So knowing that we have these regulations that we have to follow, but we don't necessarily have the resources that we need to take care of it. To me, getting to this place where time, place, and manner regulation is something that I'm um growing more comfortable with. Um, I think that it's going to be really hard and we're going to learn a lot through it. And so I am grateful to see the changes that have been made. I think the communication with the community, with the neighbors, with the business folks, and especially with the people experiencing homelessness is something I want to see more of. Um, if at all possible, you know, I think there was, through the two surveys, there's about 20 people um who were identified as people experiencing homelessness, who got to give input on these regulations. And I don't know if it's part of maybe um our, our outreach with the bike team to be able to gather some more feedback from the people that are um living outside right now and seeing what they also think about this. It would give me um more confidence in moving forward with where we're at. I think it's really hard, our community, I, I, we're hearing just a lot of input. We're hearing do nothing, do everything. And the reality is we've got to do something. And so um while this is hard and it's not the like utopian dream of what I wish things were, like we do have to deal with the reality of where we are. And so um I'm comfortable moving forward and would really love to just ensure that we have that time, that chance in the future to check and adjust and make sure that this is working for um our community to be able to exist peacefully, healthily, and in safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I also wanted to mention as part of your statements, the storing of stuff is something that hasn't, that I've been working a lot and talking to staff about. I do believe um we can work through that in a MOU with some of our providers around areas like if you have a job interview or your doctor's appointment, you could approve it. I don't think it needs to be written into this ordinance because I, I think that's not going to be helpful uh for enforcement. But I do think there's another opportunity for the council to be able to, when the implementation of this comes around, have some additional thoughts on stuff like that. So hold that thought. I think we could have a path forward to do some of that work. It just doesn't need to be in the ordinance tonight. Counselor Tibnan?
Uh, well, I'm going to piggyback on that mayor and say that uh for that future conversation, we could talk about mail. That would be great as well. My husband's a um layer carrier in Portland and uh he delivers tubs of mail to the homeless shelters. And every single time he delivers them, he gets a tub of mail back because they, they don't keep it there. And if the person isn't there when they're, when it arrives, they don't get it. And sometimes there's really important paperwork and that's part of the reason why we have a hard time helping them with resources. So I would love for us to be on the cutting edge of figuring that part of it out. Um, so I have so many thoughts. I will not stomp over the ground that Ashley, or Counselor Hartmaner Craig just covered. I agree um with so much of what you said. Um, and I'll just focus in on the numbers that keep running through my mind. Uh, I read recently in 2022, Oregon as a state needs to produce 86,000 homes just to hit par. Um, I read the other day and it shocked me that in 1978, when I was born, there were about 4.3 billion people on the planet. And now in 2023, we're almost to eight billion people. And the United States since 1978 has gained 113 million people. So uh affordability and our ability to build our way out of this is by far the biggest challenge. Um, I think that, that all of these conversations, including this one, are part of a bigger problem of how do we continue to take care of each other when there are so many of us and our communities are growing? Um, that's, that's a big, big, big one. Um, for this particular issue, I, I agree that we are hearing every perspective from community members. And thank you to everyone who took time tonight to give you perspectives and weigh in on this issue and others. And for everyone who sent us uh correspondence via email. To um Counselor Hussin's point, we have an email address on the city council website. Please keep sending it. It, it does inform how we think and feel um about these issues. Um, to the questions, I, I think that eight AM, given what we've heard about police overtime and um what other surrounding cities are doing, I, 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 I can get behind that one. I was hoping it could be a little earlier, uh, but it, that seems fair to me. I also think that that's definitely one of the ones that we'll want to um think about how it's working out when we revisit this in six to 12 months. As far as the buffers, I, I think that those are reasonable, um especially uh around schools that we extended them from two fifty out to 500. Um, I, I agree with Counselor Kimmy that it's worth considering increasing the buffer around the shelter itself. I have had concerns about that location, going back to when we selected it, um primarily because of its proximity to the freeway on and off ramps. Um, but that's a very, very busy um area. And um I think we need to look a little more closely at that. Um, the ancillary code sections, I'm fine with. And as far as any other sections, um, I think that uh this, this issue with if we are going to tell people this is one of the areas that you cannot camp in, um, we have to have a real game plan on how, not only how we're going to explain to them where they can for that evening, but how are they going to get there? Um, because if they're really far away, that, that poses a challenge, especially if they have a lot of possessions with them. Um, so that's something I think that we should explore too as part of this ordinance is um just the, just the implementation part of it.
Counselor Hussin?
Yeah, I will start with the answers to the questions and then some comments. Um, I am fine with eight AM. I'm fine with the 500 feet. Um, I am fine with um the additional ancillary code sections. Um, I don't have additional changes. Um, I do just want to say like for the folks who are listening to Counselor Tibnan's point, like I, you know, see and read every email and try, if and when possible, to respond. Um, we do hear from you when you email us. Um, and I take those emails really seriously and into consideration when we're thinking about this and talking about this. We have been talking about this issue for several months. Um, and you know, I think of a couple of different stakeholders. I think of our community that lives here, lives, lives here. I think of our business community who does business here. Um, and then of course, we're, we're thinking about our folks that are experiencing homelessness and, and ways to support them. Um, I think the folks that spoke before me brought up a couple of really important points. One thing that I do um want to start really tackling and thinking about, and I don't know if this is a conversation uh with the council and the police or a conversation with the council and the county, but there, there is an addiction issue that's happening here. And um when it comes to um the enforcement of someone, you know, under intoxicants, like where are we taking them? Like what happens? Like what does that look like? There isn't a place, there isn't a spot, there isn't, right? Like I, I was at the chamber event last week. And so, you know, what are you doing when, when this, there is someone who um has this issue? And how are we supporting them and, and what are ways to support them? And so I'd like to make sure that as part of our reporting, we're, we're talking about that and thinking about that as well. Um, there, there is a growing concern around what's happening with addiction and how we can be supportive. And that weighs really heavily on me as we're talking about, you know, moving folks around. Um, it, you know, in, implementing the laws that are coming, you know, from the powers that be so that we can do what's best for our community. So I hope that, you know, the folks that before me talked about specific reporting ways and ways for us to get ahead of this. Um, I do want to add to that list, you know, what are we doing to talk through that? Um, I know the county is working on a center of addiction um treatment. That's not going to happen right away. Um, and so what does it look like when we have folks? Um, and I think there's two sides of this, like people who are um, you know, suffering from addiction. And then, you know, there is, there is some, not, not, I don't think it's the majority, but there's, there's also violence that, that comes from that. And so how are we making sure that we're um keeping our community safe and um not criminalizing folks, but also making sure that folks who are, who are causing challenges or issues, that we are finding ways to um support some sort of enforcement of that? So that's something that weighs heavily on my mind. And I'd like to make sure that in our check-ins, we are looking at ways that we can give the right tools to um folks who are having to deal with that. Uh, I want to thank staff. This has been, I mean, this is our first hearing. We have one more. But I know a lot of you who are listening, this might be the first time you're hearing it. And, and um we obviously need to work on our communication. I do think that many of us on council often talk about how are we getting this out to our businesses? How are we getting out this community? So we'll keep pushing on that as much as we can. But um this has been a, a process for at least six months of us hearing about this. And we still have questions because there's still so much to cover. So um just keep telling us what we need to hear. But thank you staff for all the work that you've done.
Counselor Duggar?
Cool. Uh, first I'll start with, thank you for all the folks who've commented tonight. Uh, we received tons of email, so thank you for that too. Uh, we do see you, we hear your comments. I value your time that you spend with us to share your thoughts. I also want to, before I jump into my comments, just thank the staff, as Counselor Hussin just said, who, for all the work on this, I know it's a lot. And I'm grateful for, not only for you, but for your expertise, for, for the, the really help and craftiness. The reality is the state's given us a very difficult, but ultimately very necessary task, right? To craft a response to camping that is consistent with the law as decided in Martin versus Boise and in, and here in Oregon in the Grants Pass case, right? We have her testimony, uh, read lots of emails and comments from folks on both sides of this debate. Um, some stating that we aren't going far enough in limiting camping. All other people have said we aren't compassionate enough in this ordinance. I actually share both of those concerns because to me homelessness is, is the symptom, not the root cause. When folks are forced into camping, to me, that ultimately represents a failure. Uh, a failure of our system of mental health, right? To address needs, a failure of our laws to adapt to drug addiction and counseling, failure of our market economy to provide affordable housing, failure of uh to provide safety when I think about victims, victims of domestic violence. Camping should be the last resort. And I think that's an important thing to consider when we discuss implementation of House Bill three one one five tonight in our ordinance. Uh, our shelter will be compassionate, not just a place to sleep, but to heal. You know, to get resources, to get medical help, to get connected to counseling and, and job help, right? To start easing some of those traumas. But it also doesn't necessarily help with folks who don't want to be in our shelter, who are trapped in addiction or mental health crisis, or folks who sometimes just do very bad things or behave in ways that are unhealthy or unsocial. That's the unfortunate thing about these types of rules and frameworks. We have to make them broad enough to encompass, to encompass folks that are housed for every single reason. Some who desperately want to get housing and others who want to just be camp and be left alone. So my hope is that this ordinance through the compromise will work for 80% of that bell curve, right? But to everyone in Beaverton watching this, I want you to know that we realize that this does not work for everyone. That the 10% or so on either side of the bell cart, on that bell curve, they're on my mind. Uh, and we will continue to work to address keeping our businesses and residents safe, while also being compassionate and inclusive for people who desperately want assistance and desperately need that help. Folks that find themselves in a bad situation but do the right thing, I want you to know we're going to work hard to get you help. But for those of you uh bad actors that engage in destruction and harm to our residents and business communities, we will not tolerate that behavior here in Beaverton. We will partner with those businesses and residents, all of you, to work towards better communication too. I don't say that lightly. I'm reminded of one of our biggest responsibilities as counselors and that's safety. Keeping our residents safe while protecting our vulnerable communities who also deserve and desire that help and safety. So for now, uh, I'd like to us to focus on things that we can do in the short term to reduce things like police response downtown. It to increase police visibility, particularly around the MAC areas. For your questions, I'm, I think I'm an outlier here in that I think I still support seven AM, perhaps seven thirty at the latest. Businesses open early. I think a lot of coffee shops, I live downtown. I see them. I walk out every, almost every day pretty early. I think we can perhaps revisit using only bike officers for that response and perhaps use patrol officers, non-bike, for coverage earlier than eight AM so we can avoid some of the overtime. I also think I would be okay with 500 feet, but would support an inclusion uh of a buffer around the MAC areas. Uh, as far as the ancillary codes, uh, I think they're all acceptable and I would support both of, uh, both of the ones mentioned. And I cannot think of anything else. Again, thank you to staff for crafting such a comprehensive ordinance. I'm really proud of all the work. Thanks.
Counselor Kimmy?
Um, I first want to thank all the staff who's been working on this for such a long time and all the city councilors and mayor who so much input and knowledge and wisdom to crafting this um ordinance in process. Um, I am okay with eight AM. Initially I wasn't, but I followed the logic behind. And then we're going to try to find, define um medium. Um, and also, um, I want to revisit maybe um thousand feet buffer around the shelter only. If you could come back to that for the future, for everything else, 500 buffer is okay. All the ancillary code section, I'm okay with defining with it. Um, and one thing I noticed in this conversation are the people who doesn't speak English, immigrants, minority communities who owns the business and live in downtown corridor. And we have not heard a single person say and send emails uh because of language barrier or they don't really know what's going on because of um just hardworking, um, they don't have time. They cannot follow what we are going through. So I just wanted to make intentional effort to reach out to the folks who live and work in downtown corridor, which affects their lives mostly. Uh, and I want to urge staff to um uh reach out to the businesses, especially um those who doesn't speak English. So that's my comment and thank you.
Counselor Teeter?
You staff who are working so hard on this over the past several months. Um, overall, I, I really support what's put forward here. Um, I support a straightforward 500-foot buffer from the uses we've mentioned. And I try to keep it simple is helpful rather than having it be 500 some places, 250 and others. Um, I am interested in seeing what that buffer zone might look like in the, in the maps, in the G I M, GIS maps that we are given with MAC stations added. Um, yeah, I think it'd be good information for me going into the next public hearing to be able to see that in more detail. Um, if anybody's watching this and they have not seen those GIS buffer maps, they are part of the agenda packet. They're pretty far deep in. But if you scroll on down, they'll see all the color. They are really helpful to see where camping would not be allowed or where it's acceptable. Um, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Duggar just said. I, I also would support exploring the seven AM start time for, or end time for permitted camping. Um, though I also recognize that our budget challenges right now and staffing issues make that very challenging. And with police briefings being at seven thirty in the morning, uh, the logistical details of how that would actually work could be challenging. Um, I just, I don't want us to completely shut that down because I know that's when kids are walking to school, that's when people are out walking their pets before work or people are going in to work at the coffee shops or dentist's office, like comments shared. Um, and I'd be interested to see if there's a way that we can make some early outreach or enforcement work. Maybe it's just in certain districts, maybe it's um in higher priority areas. Um, I'm open, open to the earlier end time. And um, I think that was it. Oh yeah, so last comment is, this is just a piece of the larger puzzle and we've heard this from some other uh counselors here. Um, this is just the enforcement on the camping side of things. Ultimately, we do want that larger preventative package for homelessness in general that addresses mental health issues and addiction um and economic or financial issues that cause people to fall, fall into homelessness in the first place. We've got the shelter, we're taking a good step there. We can work on state and federal advocacy for the other resources we need. Like that's all good. Um, but this is just that, that enforcement mechanism for camping that we But this is just that enforcement mechanism for camping that we have to work on now, and I support the direction it's headed.
Okay. Well, thank you, Council Sia. Is there any questions you have of us as you're kind of moving forward into the next phase? Some of the things that I heard, there's a desire to understand the cost around extending the hours. That would be helpful to us and what it would take considerably, given our extreme budget situation we're in. Is that even a feasible option for us to do that? If we could get some numbers, I think that would be helpful. I think some councilors were interested in looking at a map to see what a thousand foot buffer would be, and I guess the other, the question to consider, given the space that we are now doing on ramps, is it necessary, given where our shelter is, to extend the buffer since we would already be excluding camping based on the premise that it's near an off-ramp? So if we could have that ran through, so council can understand those things. I understood from our conversation here, not in the ordinance, but we were interested in check-in points. So if we could just make sure that is built into the agenda item and not the ordinance, that our expectation is regular check-ins and to have a continued conversation around what communication to the community would look like. Is there anything else that you or Dan heard that you need direction on tonight?
I think you summarized it well for us, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to our action item of the evening. Let me pull up my script. The next item on the agenda is an action item regarding a resolution adopting the Beaverton Downtown Loop Complete Streets Concept Plan. We will begin with a staff presentation. It says short presentation in my notes, so just keep that in mind.
I will do my best to move cities quickly. Well, good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Jeanne Semesfeld-Biggs, Transportation Planning Manager in the Community Development Department. You'll recall that I was last in front of you on this topic on March twenty first, when you conducted a joint work session with the Beaverton Urban Redevelopment Agency Board. I have a few updates for you tonight. Next slide. So the action before you this evening to approve the resolution to adopt the plan. The resolution is Exhibit One of the Agenda Bill, and the plan document is Exhibit A. Next slide. The draft plan describes our planning process, what we know about the existing conditions of the loop today, the project vision and the plan itself. An implementation strategy describes our next steps and actions to make the loop a reality. Next slide. So in March and April, the project team conducted community engagement to gather comments on the project's preferred alternative, and that's the proposed plan for the loop. Some of what we heard included support for the planning process and the project vision, enthusiasm for making downtown more accessible and pedestrian friendly and a more welcoming environment to ride a bike. And we also had support for slowing traffic to make the loop a more comfortable place for people. Removing on-street parking had a mixed response from community members. Some shared concerns about business access, especially for elderly and disabled people, while others saw a benefit in creating space for the cycle track and the wider sidewalks. And then finally, several individuals expressed concerns about removing dedicated turn lanes at intersections and the effects of increasing vehicle delay along the corridor. Let's go to the next slide. So looking into the future, as downtown Beaverton grows and as the loop is built, a trip by car from one end of the loop to the other may take a few minutes longer depending on the time of day. A recently completed transportation and safety analysis of the design alternance for the city's Millikan Way Extension Project also included a preliminary analysis of nearby intersections associated with the loop. And what we found in this is really what we expected to find, which is that removing one of the existing turn lanes on the approaches to Canyon Road and Farmington Road on Holland-Watson increased motor vehicle delay and resulted in longer queues. The longer queues are a concern because of the possibility of vehicles stopping at the railroad crossing, which poses safety issues that would need to be mitigated. So as the loop advances into the project development phase to refine the plan, a comprehensive transportation and safety analysis is our next step to fully evaluate the effects of the loop on intersections, on the transportation network, on train and bus service, and really safety for all modes. And the project teams, the council, and the community can use those findings and analysis to really understand the effects on other vehicles that was walking by and transit, and make informed decisions about which changes to make on the loop. Next slide. So let's talk a little bit about next steps and how we move the loop from concept plan to reality. Chapter five of that draft plan describes our implementation strategy. And so although the loop plan that you're presented with tonight includes many details, there's still many more decisions to come. As a next step, staff would refine the plan through this project development phase, which includes preliminary design, traffic analysis, and studies of the area. And for this, the city secured two million dollars in federal transportation funds for the work, and that's anticipated to kick off in early 2024. Let's go to the next slide. The city is also receiving an additional four million dollars in federal community project funding, and that's through the efforts of U.S. Representative Suzanne Bonamici and U.S. Senators Jeff Merkley and Ron Wyden. These funds will be used to design and build a demonstration project to kickstart the loop. Staff will scope the project this summer and seek community input before seeking city council's endorsement. Next slide. So looking further out into the future, the team identified four key actions for the city to take. And these are establishing priorities and phasing for design and construction to ensure that city council, staff, and the community are pointed in the right direction and focused on achieving the same goals. Updating plans and policies to both align and coordinate the loop with other projects, development activities, and other agencies. Pursuing funding opportunities for design and construction to leverage our limited local dollars to achieve our visions. And most importantly, the loop plan commits the city to conducting inclusive and transparent community engagement with the goal of easing the impacts of construction, expanding the network of downtown communities, and continuing to broaden and deepen community connections in Beaverton. Next slide. So how much will it cost? Full buildout of the loop is estimated to cost between eighty-nine and a hundred and something million dollars. And the new Hall Boulevard Bridge over Beaverton Creek is estimated to cost an additional thirty-one to thirty-seven million. So I just want to pause here for a moment, just with a few notes about the costs. Our project team refined the cost estimate and shared their latest numbers with me. So what I'm showing on screen has been updated, it's not what's in the Agenda Bill. What changed is that the estimated cost of the loop increased by about one point two million, and the estimated cost of that new Hall Boulevard Bridge basically stayed the same. So I just wanted to note that for you. And then also, please just keep in mind that these are planning level cost estimates based on really limited information. As we continue to work on the project, these costs will go up or down as we refine the plan, and we'll just continue to keep the council informed. We've also been asked how long it will take to complete the loop. You know, anticipating maybe it could take ten years, it could likely take more. Construction is envisioned in place and phases with segments built through both city-led capital projects and developer-led frontage improvements. And then, of course, this is all dependent on having the available funding resources. Next slide. So I just want to give a quick mention of senior firm opportunities. First, coordinating with the Millikan Way Extension Project is essential. It's already happening. Millikan Way intersects with the loop at both Watson Avenue and Hall Boulevard, so the design of these two projects need to be informed by the other. And then, second, city staff see a potential for pilot projects or interim solutions. We call these quick build projects along the loop. Definitely an idea to explore. Let's go to the next slide. So before we wrap up, I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge the members of our community advisory committee. They contributed their time and they shared their personal experiences to really help shape the plan. I also want to acknowledge city staff and partner agency staff who contributed their expertise to the project. There are too many to name now, but you'll see their names listed in the reports. And in addition, we would not have been able to do this project without our outstanding consultant team led by Walker Macy and with the contributions of Communitalks and DKS Associates, Emilio Design, Nelson Nygaard, and Parametrics. And some of them are here with us this evening, watching. And then finally, I just want to thank city project manager Dan Turk and Walker Macy, project manager Ken Peary. Their collaboration and partnership got us to this day, so bravo. Let's move on to the next slide. Okay, so that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jean. Okay. Counsel, questions? Sorry, like, let's track a time here. Counsel Tivnan.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, thank you to Jean, to everyone at the city's worked on this, all of the consultants. Obviously, we've heard from a lot of people in the community that are extremely excited about this. The concept renderings kind of paint this picture of what could be. I'm very excited about almost all of it, but there are some things that give me great pause, and I want to get into those really quickly. The turn lanes, eliminating them, the language is in there. You have it, you know, right up front. It's, it is what it is, but it could create some safety issues, especially on those railroad tracks. I frequently cross over returning from City Hall and taking Watson back home. And it's not just that it could create backups to where people end up on those tracks, which will happen. It will happen. It's also that people see those lights and they see one turning yellow and they speed up to try and beat the light at Farmington to get over, right where all of those people are at our wonderful restaurant row. So I think we've got a huge problem to solve for there, and I think that cars are a reality in that area, and we have to plan for that because that's a major north-south thoroughfare for a lot of folks, including myself. Not just to get to City Hall or to get to the farmer's market, but also to get to Cedar Hills to go shopping or to see a movie with my family. Some of that stuff I can do on a bike, some of it I can't. So those turn lanes are a big one. The next one is parking. And I, my biggest concern is that whatever parking that is on street that's displaced can be found elsewhere easily by folks, whether that's your wayfinding or because it just happens to be adjacent to it. One of the kind of foregone conclusions of this plan is that we're hoping to draw more people into the downtown, ideally on foot or on bike, but they're also going to be in a car. Where are they going to go? I know that we've got this fantastic lot that's adjacent to the city library, but the farmer's market is on top of that lot, and that's a huge draw to the area. I have family in town. I took them there. Couldn't take a bike because four of them didn't have bikes, and we circled those blocks over and over again, and primarily looking for parking in those areas that would likely lose it, which then means that we're going out into the neighborhoods, and that could be quite an impact on people that live there. So I think that one needs a lot of tinkering and a lot of thought to it. The last concern I have is, I would really like to, is, to the furthest extent possible, decouple this as much as we can from the Millikan Way Extension Project. I do not want these to be dependent on each other because they're very different in terms of impacts, and the thinking has to go into them. I don't, I don't know to what extent they are coupled together, but they are referred to quite a lot in relation to each other. So there's that. The last thing I'll say is that I'm a huge fan of your consultant team. Walker Macy is legendary. They are the folks that came up with the living room in downtown Portland. They did the improvements to the Portland Saturday Market, and I'm just overall, like, feeling very grateful that we've had the creative folks that worked there on the team. So just a shout out to them. Thank you.
Counsel President.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean. My question is just about the projection, like, the future modeling of motor vehicle traffic in however many years, seventeen years in the future. It says longer queues. Do we have any idea, like, what type of, you know, delay that we're talking about there?
There is, so it's a traffic model that our traffic engineering consultant used that includes assumptions about how the system will grow and where the traffic, where the traffic patterns are. I don't have specific information to share with you right now, tonight, or off the top of my head, but the only modeled portions of what the loop proposes in affiliation with some of the conditions of the future Millikan Way. So that's why there's sort of another step to fully integrate the entire loop and all of the recommendations that are proposed there. But it does, it does give us information in terms of how far back do the loops go. And again, it's really modeling just that one hour of the PM peak, or as that, as that sort of that, where we tend to see the traffic the most.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have more information to share there, but yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was just kind of curious. I mean, I think, like, those two intersections, Watson and Hall, are definitely, like, they're a huge reason why we want to do this loop project. And so I'm really hopeful that the redesign of the area and the district is going to cause so many different visual cues to people to, like, slow down. And I really hope we're going to be able to stop that, like, punch it to make the two-light situation that we see all the time, right? And that has led to people being injured and killed on those roadways. So I think that, like, when we look at the loop and, like, its total package, I'm really hopeful for the things that it's going to help with pedestrian safety, with really changing driver behavior. And I think it'll be a really interesting challenge for our traffic engineers, right, to figure out the lights and the pedestrian crossings and all the things to make sure that that's just part of that total system that we're building. So that was just my one question and a little side note about it. So thank you, Jean.
Right, thank you.
Counsel Hussin.
Yeah, I'll be as brief as I can be. Thank you, Jean. Thank you, staff. Thank you, the community advisory committee. I'm super excited about this. I definitely think this is the direction and vision I see for our community. I do have some just hesitations, right? Hall is a major north-south. Counselor Tivnan's right, like, I do it every day. And so I just hope as we continue to build this vision, that we are really leveraging the data that we have to make the right decisions that do not create, you know, I think the constituent talked about, right, like, people going different ways and, right, like, just trying to create other traffic flows. So as we continue this work, like, I love everything we're doing. I love the direction we're going. I just, I hope we're being thoughtful of that, too. And if somebody wants to give us some, I don't know, public transportation gift that is within the loop or something that allows some flexibility because Hall is just such a north-south, such a major north-south way that I worry deeply around, you know, how will we route traffic? But thank you deeply for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Counsel Duggar.
Yeah, I'm going to be really quick, too, because it's getting late. Couple really great things. Obviously, as a resident and worker and all this in central Beaverton, right? I walk every day, bike a few times a week, and probably drive close to every day through the area. So I think it's going to be transformational. A couple of points that I want to make for both other councilors and the folks watching on TV. Part of the promise of this for me is we don't give people an option right now. You have to drive, almost. You know, I think one of the commenters earlier, you know, said it more eloquently than I, but even as a resident of central Beaverton, I'm an outlier. You know, I think a lot of us would much prefer to do a lot more walking and biking, but it's not safe to do so. And so I think about demand of the road system, and we And we pretty much require people to be in their car now. So you can, you can jot me down as someone who will definitely walk more, someone who will definitely bike a lot more. And I think I'm not alone in that. I also think about our mostly empty parking garage that the, the, the uh, taxpayers of Beaverton have paid for. Uh, over by the Reza Center and that's hundreds of spaces, but the reality is it's really hard right now to cross Farmington. Uh, and Canyon is a pedestrian. So if you park over there, you're gonna have a not great experience. Uh, as someone who has that experience a, a, a couple of times a week. So I think part of, part of this also will fix that, right? Like with some of our parking concerns, I think we've got a, we've got to figure out that last mile communication part of this too. Whether that be uh, bike sharing or scooters or something along that, right? So we can have people park it, our existing forty million dollar garage that, you know, that they're paying for. Uh, so we don't have to duplicate resources just because it's awful to cross Canyon and Farmington. Uh, so I think I, I'm personally very excited about this. I congratulate the staff and thank you immensely as a resident. Uh, and as a counselor, because this is going to be transformational. I do think we have some, as you pointed out, Jean, some things to work out over time. And there'll be plenty of time to do that uh, to our businesses, to our residents. We will continue to listen to you, to our advisory. Uh, council um, that has worked so hard. I'm incredibly grateful. Look at all those smart people. Like we've got some real rock stars working on this. So I am optimistic about the implementation of this and, and where it goes, but. This will probably be finished when I'm long off this council. But I'll still be a resident here and I'm incredibly grateful for all of the work that's happening. This is going to be awesome for our neighborhood and for our city. Thank you.
Counsel Teeter.
Yeah, thank you, Jean and Citizen Advisory Committee. Um, I'm really excited by most of this, so my comments are mostly smaller and more technical. Um, was there any consideration for travel lanes being ten feet instead of eleven?
Um, I will say yes, that question did come up. Um, and one of the factors um. That we need to think about with Hall and Watson is that they do carry transit. And hearing both from the engineer in terms of what our standard lane with those, but also transit and the space that um, they're more comfortable operating in. That's why we land on eleven feet.
Okay, okay, thanks. Um, as we look at the bike path. Um, I think about the bike path that's being added to Western right now and it looks like it's got a mountable curb. And so one of the things that I'm cautious of here is just making sure that drivers cannot actually drive up onto the bike path. To load or unload or let people out because that. As a dangerous obstacle for people. So it's something I'm keeping in mind as we keep going forward, but I would love for you all to. Um, and then I'm looking at this, like I ride my bike through here almost every day. Um, and some of the left turns look challenging with, with the floating. I don't remember what it's called, floating turn boxes. Um, can you touch on those a little bit about how those work or? Um. Yeah, the thought process there for that.
Yeah, um, so those are the two-stage left turn bike boxes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So those are there at the intersections. Um, the cycle track that we're proposing. Um, at this point, it would not have a mountable curb. It would be a fully protected space for cyclists. Um, if you're on that cycle track and you need to turn left, you have to create a way for those cyclists to be able to do that. And that happens at the intersections. So you would come down off the cycle track on the pavement level through an intersection. And instead of continuing through, you would just sort of peel off a little bit to the right. So you're between the green cross bike and the white crosswalk. And there's a bike box there for a cyclist to be able to wait for the traffic signal um, going in the opposite. The, the opposite direction on the side street. So you could actually make that turn. So you would do it with the traffic signals. That's sort of the two-stage. You take a left in two stages.
Okay.
We can, I'm gonna share with you more offline.
No, thanks. Um, no, I, I just ask because I'm thinking through like people with larger bikes or cargo bikes if. What that's like, but maybe I need to hear from some community members about that. Um, I know that mentions leading pedestrian signals. I think that's great. Um, I would also love leading bicycle signals. Um, because there's a danger of getting right hooked at the intersections when we're starting out. Um, and I think. I think that, I think that's it for now. I do agree with Counselor Duggar about the. Um, we're basically forcing people to drive through there for the most part. So uh, the data that we gather, I do want to be aware of the context. That it's just not safe for people walking or biking for the most part. But yeah, thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Awesome. Uh, thank you for the presentation, for the work on this project. I feel like I've said the loop more times in my life than humanly possible. Uh, this is amazing project. We've garnered uh, uh, national attention from uh. The government that invested in our planning to do this and our Congresswoman's who's investing in our vision and dream for the future. This should make the community intensely proud. We're doing something bold tonight. We're moving forward in a, in a bold vision. Does it solve every issue that every single one of us to do? Of course not. This is the prop, you know, seven elected officials is a lot. Everyone has their minor tweaks. They want to accomplish what we have tonight in front of us. Is a really great community input process that happened to get us where we are today. And like all good um, negotiations, everyone's leaving wanting a little bit more. Uh, it gives us great opportunity to uh, do this project in the future, have check-in points as we start to move and do complete streets in other parts of our city. But this is a meaningful first step in a monumental project for our city. That will be complete long after all of us are um, serve as uh, elected officials. Hopefully, the future council will invite me to the ribbon cutting when this is accomplished. So I appreciate that. Uh, with that, Counsel President, do you have a motion for us this evening?
I do, Mayor. I move that the council approve resolution number four eight three eight, adopting the Beaverton Downtown Loop Complete Street Concept Plan.
Ooh, ooh, who am I gonna give it to? Oh, God's voice was the loudest, but I'm giving it to Counselor Tivnan, so. Oh, you didn't hear it? All right, Counselor Hassan, just because. All right, it's removed by Counsel President and seconded by Counselor Hassan. Any discussion on tonight's motion? All right, seeing none, will the recorder call a roll?
Counselors Duggar.
Yes.
Heart Mayor Prig.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yep.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Counsel President. I will see you guys all at Budget Committee next week.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Mayor. Our next agenda item is work session. It's agenda item two, three, one, one, one. The Downtown Beaverton Parks and Open Space Framework Draft Plan Themes and Goals Work Session. Sarah, the mic is yours.
Um, just quickly, uh, we've been at it for three hours. Is it possible to take a five-minute bio break?
Yes, that's okay. Sarah, are you okay if we take a quick five?
So sorry, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. We'll take a quick five, resume at nine oh three-ish.
Okay, thanks.
Evening, uh, I guess the mayor's gone. Good evening, council. I'm Sarah King with the City of Beaverton and uh, also with me this evening is Gary Keck. Gary is my project management cohort over at THPRD. Let me get our slide presentation. Uh, I'm going to give the presentation tonight, but Gary will be here in case there are questions. That uh, would be appropriate for him to answer. So. I am hoping you can see this.
Yep, Luke Spencer.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, I know it's late. I'm gonna move through this quite quickly. Uh, as I said, this is a joint project between THPRD and the City of Beaverton. We are doing a, developing a framework plan for new parks and open spaces, greensplay, green spaces and trails. In downtown Beaverton. Uh, some of you, I think are um. Because we've got a, a couple of new folks, I'm going to backtrack a little bit and talk about why we undertook this effort. Uh. Many of you know, we've done a lot of planning in um, downtown Beaverton. Uh, most recently, the downtown design project from a few years ago. We've updated, updated development codes and uh, Bureau is, you know, acquiring property and doing a redevelopment strategy for downtown. For those downtown properties that it's owned. So there's a lot of energy um, planning and implementing um, our vision for downtown. Beaverton. But one thing that's clearly missing is a focused effort on what we want. Uh, our, our open spaces, our green spaces, our trails and our parks to look at downtown. Uh, these are vital um, amenities and vital spaces, an important part of the development of downtown Beaverton. So this joint effort is an effort to um, focus on. On a broad sense, new parks, open spaces, plazas and trails. And also an important piece of this is that parks and open spaces help to catalyze the high quality. Private development and investment that we hope to have here in downtown Beaverton. Uh, I uh, am missing a slide here to talk a little bit about the goals for the project. This is a high-level project, so we're going to talk about the types of parks that are, and open spaces that are appropriate for an urban area. Like downtown Beaverton or an urbanizing area like downtown Beaverton. We're going to recommend general areas for net, for new spaces. We're not, uh, this plan will not identify site-specific. Uh, new park places that will come, you know, later on as part of our implementation strategy. We are going to identify park amenities that are important for a vibrant downtown, both based on the kinds of activities that we expect downtown. As well as the engage, public engagement we had. What if people said, tell, what did people tell us they wanted to see downtown? What is downtown lacking? And then, of course, we'll have an implementation strategy, which will lay out rules and responsibilities and next steps. When we talk about downtown, what area are we focusing on? Uh, we're focusing on an area that is um. Fifth Street to the south, Center Street to the north. Approximately one hundred and seventeenth on the east and Cedar Hills. Cedar Hills Boulevard wrapping around. Um, to the east of Beaverton High School. There was a quite a bit of community engagement that led up to this plan and was done as part of this plan. Uh, we certainly, with many of our um, plans like the uh, downtown. Uh, downtown design project and our vision update that we just completed, there was a lot of uh, the loop project that you just heard about. Lot of community engagement that had been done for those plans and we didn't want to start completely from zero. So we looked at all those plans, looked at the engagement that came out of it, and then we conducted our own engagement. Particularly those areas that uh, we felt were, um, we wanted to make an extra effort. And so we held some um, uh, focus groups. With multilingual groups, youth-focused groups and disability-focused groups to add on to the general. Uh, pre-robust engagement uh, that we conducted specifically for this plan last summer. And what did we hear? Well, what we heard is um, you know, things that are not going to be a surprise to you. People downtown, even though downtown is an urban area, they want to still feel a connection with nature. They want places to gather and to bring communities together, whether it's two people meeting. And uh, looking for a place to sit down and chat or a birthday party or a gathering of. A citywide gathering of thousands. People want places to be together. Uh, they want to feel welcome. They want to feel inclusive. They want to feel safe. They want to see restrooms. They want to see water fountains. Those kinds of things that bring comfort. And uh, they also talked about the kinds of activities they want to do in downtown. In their urban spaces. They want to enjoy food, whether it's a nearby restaurant, whether it's a nearby. A, a food cart or food truck in a park, whether it's seating. They want places to dine, places to picnic. Uh, they want water. They want drinking fountains. They want access to the creek. They want splash pads. Water was a theme we heard a lot about and I talked about things like rest, uh, restaurants. The other thing about urban parks that people recognize, which was great, is that downtown parks are different than parks that we see in neighborhoods. And one way they are different is they're a little more concentrated. Uh, we are planning a downtown for all ages, all abilities, uh, all types of people. Um, living, working, playing downtown. And so the parks that we, and open spaces that we create there. The plazas, the trails, they have to do double duty, if you will. They've got to serve a wide variety of population. Not every park is going to serve everybody's needs. But a park or a plaza is going to have to serve multiple needs in an urban environment. And then the last thing I'll say is that we did some um, interviews with developers. And also we looked at the developer interviews that Bureau did as part of the uh, redevelopment strategy. And it was pretty clear, the development community, the people that we talked to, wanted to see more um, perks downtown as amenities. And as incentives for future development. In fact, one of the developers. That we talked to, who's done a project here in downtown Beaverton, said, he said, I knew that I wanted to. Uh, invest in downtown Beaverton when I saw City Park. He was so impressed with City Park. So. Um, perks are meaningful for the kind of work that uh, the kind of development we want to see. We took all of the public engagement that we heard and we looked uh, and uh, looking at our past plans. And we developed themes and goals and we boiled things down to four themes. Uh, I'm not going to go through all of the goals that we've developed, but to tell you that in the plan, um. We've got developed, we've got, we will have goals. Uh, grouped by these themes and then we will have several activity, uh, actions. Maybe um, anywhere from two to five actions under each goal that support that goal. I'm just going to mention a few of them tonight. Uh, mostly for the interest of time. So our first goal is gathering community. And uh, an important goal here is to locate and design new downtown parks and open spaces to align with planned urban growth. To close service gaps and to offer safe pedestrian access. Um, and another important one is creating open spaces and amenities of an urban character that allow multiple ways to gather, multiple activities. And so you're going to see uh, actions that really um, speak to both agencies, working together to develop new spaces. And develop um, the amenities in those spaces that help achieve and support the, excuse me, the city's redevelopment goals. The other thing I will uh, point out here is the goal to collaborate with developers to offer accessible parks and open spaces. You know, the city is uh, owns and maintains uh, and manages parks down, parks and plazas downtown. THPRD is an important, our uh, our parks provider. But there's also um, spaces that get provided by, by developers. And a really great example of an urban space that is privately developed that has public access. Is the small plaza between um, La Scala and the Barcelona developments on Lombard Street. It's a delightful little space. It's privately developed. And we want to look for ways to incentivize more of that, so that we get not only our traditional, more traditional thinking parks. The urban plazas that we think about when we think of urban spaces, but also those little spaces in between developments. That provide a great respite and pause space. And it's a way to leverage, uh, you know, it doesn't just have to be the public sector that provides. All right, moving on. To welcome and celebrate. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, uh, because you've heard a lot about this. Basically, um, people love events. They love our multicultural events. They love our events that involve food, crafts, music, theater, et cetera. And it's important that our parks um, be flexible to allow for these kinds of gatherings, that they have the infrastructure to support it. And then the other thing we want to look at is um, how can we. Streamline our codes and the codes of some of our um. Partner agencies to be able to provide interim parks. For example, if THPRD buys property. And they, but, but they've got to wait several years to find the funds to actually develop the park. What can they do in the interim that can provide some interim amenities, some pop-up amenities? Um, right now, the codes uh, that govern that inserted development are pretty onerous. And so we're going to look at ways that we can streamline that. And that's not just city codes, as I said, other codes as well that would apply. Uh, reflected protect nature. This is huge. As we develop uh, at, and urbanize. As we develop uh at, an urbanized downtown Beaverton, uh. The public has told us they want to integrate nature into parks and plazas and that can be done in so many ways. Uh, and a important part of that too is um, is raising awareness. And showcasing the um, the creeks that we have downtown. So an example of ways, uh, one of the actions about the uh, that, that support that is actually looking at locating new parks. Along creeks that provide um, physical and visual access to these creeks. Another action is that ensuring new infrastructure, like um, in the future, a new Hall Boulevard Bridge, which was discussed. In the Loop Agenda Bill, for example, and, and mentioned in the Loop Plan. Um, when we do that kind of infrastructure, we need to offer visual access to the creeks. Uh, let's not um hide the creeks, let's uh, let's showcase them. There we go, all right. And then the last one actually also connects nicely with the loop and that is to connect. We uh heard from the community that want to improve and enhance access into and around. Parks and open spaces, they want to see trails, they want to say si- see safe routes. Uh, and also they want to make sure that wayfinding uh provides a, navigates people safely. Both to parks and open spaces as well as between these spaces and other important downtown destinations. So you'll see actions that support um tha- that goal. Okay, we're going to come back to you in a couple of months with a draft plan for you to uh review and discuss. Um, the important part of that plan is going to include these goals and the supporting actions. You will also see a framework plan map, so you'll see some of these actions and concepts and goals actually mapped. That will help you visualize uh how we're going to, how we, both agencies are going to uh go about um providing these spaces. And then there'll be an implementation strategy which will outline roles and responsibilities. Uh, as well as, we're still noodling whether it's a high, medium, low priority or a um. Uh, long-term, medium-term, short-term type of uh metric, we're not sure yet, we're still working on that. And as I said, uh, we will be coming back to you uh in late July for that presentation of the draft plan for your review and question. So I want to open it up for questions. Are there any questions you have on the goals? Anything you see missing? Uh, anything you want to be sure we emphasize? As we move forward with this.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, Council Hassan.
Yeah, uh, thanks everyone for sticking out. It's late, I'm tired, I'm going to try to be fast, but I do want to say what I want to say. Um, thank you so much for this presentation. Um, I'm really curious and um, I'll just share this. And then we could go back and kind of revisit it. If there are ways for us to connect some of this work with the work that's around the Multicultural Center. And I know that this is more open space focused and park focused, but you know, are there opportunities for us to be more collaborative or coordinated, right? And so finding um some sort of physical space and or creating outdoor space in that same area, that's kind of the first thing that comes to my mind. Um, the other piece that I just want to say that I'd like to either see in these goals and or just kind of thought through is. I don't know if it's, it was, where did I see it? It was um. Sorry, I need to go to the slide now. It was the pop-up.
Sorry, yeah.
I, yeah, I'm going back to it. Reducing barriers to pop-ups and short-term perks and open space projects. And you know, I think that's a really big area for us. Um, I, I just want to say, I, I know this council has heard this, but I want to say this for the record. Like, we're in a mental health crisis, like that's just what's happening. Um, and so some folks are doing really well, some folks are really struggling. You know, peo- different people are in different places and I'd really like us to feel like there are places that are in the outdoors that are allowing people. Um, whether it's just to get space, whether it's just to get time, whether it's to get resources, whether it's to free play at a park. Um, you know, just to, to, to be connected to someone. We are, um, you know, there's research that's saying we're like at our loneliest right now. Um, and I feel that and I think many others feel that and so I really want to think through what it means for us to. Make these spaces, not just places for us to go, but for us to really connect in ways that matter. And, and specifically when it comes to our youth, that we are building spaces and places for them to feel safe, to feel connected. To feel like they, that they belong. Um, I think there's such a big opportunity there, especially as I, I imagine. Like the brink of the mental health crisis that we're really honestly just beginning, so I know that's a lot to say. Um, I, I just, big picture, want to think like, you know, Dan, Bureau Board, like are there some opportunities for us to like parlay some other concepts with this? Um, but more specifically, how are we looking at this from like a really strong mental health lens? I know mental health is really more of a county, public health is really a county issue, but these are spaces that we can create. To, to create that connection and to create that bond. I think a little more of that falls on THPRD. Um, sorry Gary, in terms of like that connection and like that, the importance of that, uh, but I do think that. Um, you know, like those, those free space moments to show up at a park and to like do the things or to have a. Open field where there's a soccer ball and people can play, like I really want us to get back to that in a way that allows our, um, our youth. Especially to be connected. Um, I don't want to hear about, uh, you know, I'm not saying that I have, but I don't want to hear about a gang task force. I want to hear about pickup basketball on Saturdays and Sundays in Central Beaverton, that we are co-facilitating with THPRD or THPRD is facilitating. Because we know that our youth are struggling and instead of sending them down, down a path of criminalization, we're sending them down a path of connection activity and belonging. Thank you for coming to my TED Talk.
Well, Sir Teeter.
Thank you, Sarah, Sarah and Gary. Um, I remember when I first started working with the Beaverton Downtown Association five years ago, one of the very first conversations that somebody had with me. Was about the need for spaces for dogs and pets outside. I am a huge, huge supporter of more building and more housing in downtown Beaverton. Um, I also recognize that some of the green spaces that we have in downtown are private property. And there's potential for them to be developed in the future, so I'm coming into this just thinking about how we can make sure there's still green space. For people to relax and enjoy with each other or with their pets, so that it's not just a bunch of concrete everywhere. Like I love people living in there, living in downtown, I just wanted to be homing outside also. Um, I also think about Beaverton High School. And the school district and how oftentimes it feels like the. Park spaces, green spaces, tennis courts, basketball courts, like a lot of those are closed after hours in schools. And I think that there's a partnership opportunity with the school district too, to see how we can leverage their spaces. When school's not in session, to make sure it's just open and accessible for people. Maybe that's a partnership with THPRD in the school district. Maybe it's something the school district does on their own. Um, I just think Beaverton High School is a huge resource there, right next to downtown Beaver Tendons. Underutilized when school's not in session. Um, and then there is the goal of connect, improving and enhancing the neighborhood access into and around downtown parks and open spaces. And I'm thinking on, about that one a lot and I probably will keep thinking about it after this, but I think about like. Main Avenue going into downtown, I think about Lombard, I think about Milligan to the west of City Hall. And how these are some common access points for people who aren't driving, but there, it might not necessarily feel like. The first choice for people to travel down because it doesn't feel like it's extremely connected to park space. I think a good example is behi- behind the high school from. Third to tenth, there's the off-street path that connects over to Evelyn Shifler. And I think that's a really great example of like dedicated infrastructure that connects parks outside of downtown. With the school in downtown and everything else that's in downtown too, and I'm just thinking through what does connection look like and. In regards to how people move, because I think, I always think about THPRD being part of our. Capital improvement planning and transportation infrastructure and I, I don't just want it to be seen as this is where people play, but it's also. THPRD has a key part of our transportation infrastructure too. And then lastly, I can, I might be forgetting it. Um, yeah, I think it, I think it passed me anyways. Thank you, this is a great start. I'm sure I'll email more comments or, or thoughts as they come up. Um, but yeah, I really appreciate the work on this and it's been really exciting to see it go forward.
Well, Sir Tipton.
Thank you. Um, a few things, this is all very exciting and. A couple of things come to mind around um, the pop-ups, which Council Hassan mentioned. And what role some of the Bureau properties might play in that? We've got a lot of them now and they're kind of sitting there. And I, I can't help but think about back when Curiosities was on Canyon, the Arts Commission helped. Uh, get this beautiful mural put in this uh, this sidewalk mural that. It, it was almost like a gateway feature to folks that were taking Canyon and, and uh, driving west. And a lot of people were like, where did that come from? And it stayed there long after Curiosities was gone. Um, and then kind of wore away because it was temporary. Uh, so I think the Arts Commission would be a key player in helping to brainstorm ideas for how we can activate those spaces. Um, help get volunteers and, and just provide some of the muscle power behind getting artists to engage and help us think of. Of how to bring some color and life to some of these places that right now just have either barren lots or fences around them. Or buildings that are waiting to be demolished. Uh, the other thing is the, to the point about the creeks, oh gosh, yes. I wish that we had unlimited funds to daylight a lot of our creeks that are currently underground and running through pipes. Um, but people are starting to realize they're there. And I, I'm hoping that as a part of this effort, there can be some kind of a wayfinding map. That allows people to even know where to go to enjoy um, the three creeks that we've got. And then the last thing I'll say is um, this isn't, this actually is not within the boundary, but I'm hoping that. Uh, we get some clarity on the relationship with THPRD and, and transfers of land. Or what the relationship looks like at converting some of our, our um. Our land that's currently like set asides into open space. The thing I'm thinking of is uh, the Greenway area that's uh adjacent to my neighborhood. There's this long strip of land that was a set aside for a potential road that was going to connect from Hall Boulevard to. A hundred and uh, hundred and twenty fifth, I think. And it looks like that's never going to happen, much to the relief of the people who live in the area. And it's this really beautiful place, it's grown up with, uh, it's got a forest, it's got pathways that have just organically been created by uh folks using it. Um, there's a lot of potential to that and it's kind of like, where in the world do you start? So I'm hoping that as we're going through this, we kind of come up with a playbook for what it looks like if we have some really. Choice bits of land that we know we want to have as a set aside for open space. Um, so that we can kind of create a template that we could then apply in areas outside of this steady area.
All right, Council Kimmy. Oh, is that, are you good, Councilor Tipton? Okay, you didn't mute yet, so I just didn't want to cut you off. Okay, Council Kimmy.
Yeah, nice getting long, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it down to thirty minutes. Well, um, I like the fact that there's a wel- welcome and so let's celebrate where expand and improve permanent event specific. Infrastructure to support wide range of public programs that kind of. Full side, sides, side by side with our multicultural center concept in a way to celebrate event spaces. Uh, perform performances and experiences with different culture and somehow we can incorporate that into um. To work together, together with THPRD to create something like that in a downtown area would be uh wonderful. And another thing is um, when we talk about downtown Beaverton, I don't think we still have an identity. And we talk about theme, so what is the theme? I think it's very, really important to how, when people think about downtown Beaverton. What do they think about? Is it arts? Is it food? Is it different culture? Is it fashion? Is it auto dealers, you know? So we want to create something, a theme that's attractive to not only the residents. But to the visitors who's going to come, so we can, um, I think we can work with THPRD, not just parks, not just trails. But somehow incorporate that into uh, cafes, uh, somebody can stroll down. Uh, with the creek and enjoy the food and coffee and, and walking the dog and that's where people can shop. So it could be a little charming downtown. Uh, so I think we, we, I would suggest that we can put some. Heads together, come up with the theme, as Councilor Dogger always talked about, maybe it's like, no, central, central downtown. Or old town, we're going to have different names maybe, so maybe you can think about that in the future. Um, that's all the comments I have, less than thirty minutes, thank you.
Council Teeter.
Hey, sorry to double dip, but I remember the final ending of my comment. Um, we have somewhat developed a temporary park that is not yet a park. The, the dining commons and I would love to see. As this pending more conversation and more research into it, I would love to see THPRD actually take ownership of that space and. Turned it into a beautiful park right there on First Street. Um, and I know that's like a specific action, um, but I think it also highlights a theme of. Uh, temporary park activation or um, pop-up parks, so. I feel like we've talked about this in just a recent conversation tonight, maybe with the loop. Um, about doing some temporary, temporary actions that can demonstrate what a space could be like. So maybe we got a space near the round where it's a parking area right now and we want to turn it into a park for a weekend or for a week. And just kind of see what happens a- as people use the space and maybe it turns out being really wonderful or maybe it's a flop. And at least we know that before we turn it into something with millions of dollars. And so I would love for us to think about what is, what is a temporary activation look like as far as experimenting with park space in downtown.
Okay, Council Hassan.
One last comment, this is more maybe for Dan and the council. Um, I just want to say like, as I look at like the budget and the future and, and the things. Like I do want to make sure that while I know this aligns with what our vision is big picture, I want to make sure if we're saying yes to this, that. That we know what we're saying no to, so I just kind of want to put that on our radar and I think this is very important work, I think it's critical, I think it's essential, but. But I, I don't know what we could be saying no to with future um, with future budget and with just knowing our fiscal sys- situation. So I, I do just want to caution us and I love to dream with you, but I, I want to make sure we're saying yes to something that we know what we're saying no to, so, thanks.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think um, one thing, Sarah, I'm kind of interested in hearing about a little bit more, maybe next time or even just like in a one-on-one is. Um, how are we kind of tying our loop plans together with this? I think, you know, obviously the downtown um, parks and open spaces. And the downtown definition within that is so much larger than the loop. Um, but I am kind of curious how they'll kind of marry together in this case. Um, I think I'm super excited about the opportunity to strengthen the partnership with THPRD. Um, to Counselor Teeter's um comment about um, dogs and pets and things like that was something that, you know, back when I was on the THPRD board. We really wanted to get these dog runs up and, you know, getting through the, the city code process was really challenging. When all we were trying to do was put up a fence, right? And like, and test a pop-up concept. And so what I'm excited about this is that I'm hearing things that are really future-thinking and innovative. We're hearing about opportunities for the city and the park district to really work together on meeting the needs of our communities in different ways. Um, so that's really exciting to me and I, I really like the themes. I think that um, some of these things happen organically, some of these things have been. Um, built with intention over the years within our community and I love that this is kind of giving us that chance to reflect on like. How have we worked together in the past and how can we better serve our community together with like this really intentional plan? Um, and my interpretation um, of this being a framework is it gives us a, a guidebook. On how these things could be, but it's not something um, like the loop where it's a specific project we're going after. Is that correct? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, wonderful. Um, so my hope, Nadia, is that um, it doesn't lead us to having to say no to lots of other things. Because hopefully this is just a framework that allows our partnerships to like, to, to, you know, work together and um. And maybe create um. And maybe create um easier opportunities for working together as two jurisdictions, right? Because i- it is, when you have to work through an IGA and things like that, like it 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 can add time. And so I think that having this framework is going to help us. Have some um clear understandings of how our two jurisdictions are going to work together and service to our community, which I think is really great. And I think that the themes. Um are really spot on. Um I think one of the ones I think that's going to be hardest, but is important to me is the um protect and reflect. Nature. And so not just like the creeks and natural systems, but um. We, we're talking a lot as a council about tree canopy, we're talking about how can we grow it, how can we preserve it? And when I think about the map area, it's an area with like so much concrete at this point in in kind of our city's development. And so um like that goal of like expanding shade and having access to covered places, I think is going to be really critical for creating. Respite from the heat. Um we're experiencing it this week in May, right? Record temperatures. So. Um I think this is also something that may be a really good um opportunity to work with like our climate action task force. Or look at other ways within like our climate goals that we can influence this plan with, because I think that they go really well together. All right, any final comments from anyone, Sarah or Gary? And thank you, Gary, for staying up so late with us. I mean, it's not, I don't know, I never had to stay this late on a THPRD board meeting.
Yeah, I haven't either. This is a new one for me.
Yeah, so thank you for being here with us. Uh Sarah, any uh final comments or do you have what you need from us?
This is great. Thank you so much for the input. And I, this is, this will give us also some things to be sure we connect with you all about. Um when we come back to you. And I just wanted to say one thing that several of you mentioned that I failed to mention, but it's really important. And that is about the working relationship between the city and THPRD staff. Um this has been a really fruitful uh work to date and we'll talk in the implement, when we. Mention the implementation plan, we'll talk about how we move forward together. And uh that's one of the most important things that come out of this plan is the uh strengthening of our working relationship.
Awesome, that's great. Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you, council, for um giving solid input this late in the night. I know sometimes it's easy for us to kind of uh trail off. So um thank you so much, everyone. And we will adjourn our meeting tonight at nine thirty-seven PM.